19 update, so I will turn it over to you, Dr. Bedell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before we get into the presentation, there's a video that I shared with our uh team earlier in the week, uh probably about thirty folks on our team uh from Dr. James Hildreth, and I don't know if anybody has had an opportunity to see it. He's the Harry Medical uh college president and uh one of a handful of people that's truly an expert in what we're dealing with right now, having degrees from Harvard, Oxford University, and of course John Hawkins University. Uh and I thought the video was just powerful in really being able to break down and help us get a better understanding of what we're dealing with. Uh so please, I know with the technology, I don't know how clear this video will be, but I think it's uh something I thought I would start our presentation off with. So Joe, we're ready.
One of the things that's disturbing about the COVID-19 virus is that four out of five people who get infected are infected by someone who does not have symptoms. People who study virus spread assign them what are called basic reproductive numbers. COVID has a value of about four, which means that for every person who's infected, on average, up to four people might become infected by the person who's transmitting the virus. That means that the number of people infected could possibly double every six days. And if you do the math, that would mean that a single person after sixty days could be responsible for a million infections. So this is serious. The scientific underpinnings of what people are being asked to do are based on what we know about how the virus is spread. The first thing to know is that the virus can survive for hours and hours on certain surfaces. So that if a person who has COVID touches a doorknob or handles a utensil or does other things and leaves the virus on that surface, the virus can stay there for up to, in some cases, up to a day. And that's why the washing of the hands is so important. Human beings by habit touch the face many, many times a day. And there's something called the T-zone, which constitutes your eyes, your nose, and your mouth. Most of our skin is keratinized, which means that viruses cannot infect them because they're essentially not living. But your eyes, nose, and mouth have mucous membranes, and those cells are perfectly happy to accept viruses becoming infected by them. Coronaviruses are indigenous to bats, and because of the genetic differences between humans and bats, those viruses don't normally infect humans. They require an intermediate host. So what happens is the coronavirus infects another animal, adopts to growing mammals, and then it's able to infect humans. For SARS, it was cats. For MERS, it was camels. And for this virus, we don't know what the intermediate is. But the main point is that unlike those other viruses, this virus has adopted to be able to be transmitted from humans to humans. In the case of COVID-19, we are in fact the vectors because we're transmitting the viruses to each other. So the goal is to eliminate the vectors, and that means that we have to protect ourselves, and by doing that, we protect everybody else. So don't be the vector. Really, by doing what we're doing, social distancing and not being vectors, we're actually protecting a large segment of our society. So each one of us can play a big role in saving lives by taking care of ourselves. We're actually taking care of each other, and that's what this is really all about.
Thanks, Joe, uh for running that, and I wanted to share that with you all because I know as we get ready to get started with this portion of our our agenda, we had a situation that occurred on Monday where we ended up having to take some immediate action due to the fact that uh we had an employee that potentially um had all of the symptoms and was, had to go home, had to get tested, and didn't, I personally didn't recognize that it was gonna take this kind of turn. And I started to make phone calls to board members on um Saturday. And at that time during Saturday, um the talk was more about the ideal around, you know, what does, if we reimagine what school could look like, if we could reimagine what a new calendar could look like, wanting to really update you all on that, and I gave very basic updates on this whole situation with our food services employees, especially with the people that I had spoken to. And then as we, as a team, we got together on Sunday, had more conversations. I never backed up to give those board members that I spoke with some of the more recent updates around what we were hearing of with the concerns and the possibility that we may have to suspend operations. And then when Jennifer, we, Jennifer Collier made some calls and those board members got a much more updated um conversation from her, so it left some of our board members feeling like they were being blindsided with it. And one of the things I said to my team was that right, that's, that's on me, um because I didn't come back and give them an update after we had our conversation on Sunday. And that ultimately resulted in a lot of uh some frustration, rightfully so. So I, you know, one of the things I said to the officers yesterday morning, you know, I will, I will own that and I will apologize for my inability to get back and cover bases. And even when my conversation with uh Chairwoman Manser, I, you know, we talked about it and once I explained things to her again, she was like, okay, that's great. I feel much better about what I'm hearing, but I didn't backtrack. So that was part of the issue. And when we did get the information from the Health Department that we needed to put our people into quarantine, even though we had not had the results based on what's been happening and how fast this virus spreads, we at that point had around a hundred and thirty people potentially impacted by this. And when you saw that video, you know, it really shows how one person can impact four people, and then it just gets worse from there. And we had to make a decision. And then, and it was honestly, once we got that information, everything went downhill. Media already had information and, and, and I think it got to a point where we said, okay, we need to get this communication out to the board, um and then get the communication out to the community. But we didn't give you all like details around, here's the four main reasons, or these are the reasons why you have to suspend operations. And so, you know, we talked about it, a lot of frustration with all of this. As I said last week, there's a lot of things happening, and this stuff is moving fast, and nobody's ever gone through this, and there's gonna be mistakes, and there's gonna be hiccups. Uh and then we just gotta kind of work to rebound from there. Uh but I did want to explain what happened with that situation uh before we give the update, offer, offer my apologies because I, I, if I would've just gone back and backtracked, it would've probably come out a lot better than people feeling like they were being blindsided. That's not our intention to blindside folks, but we also know that, I mean, the, this stuff is moving fast and, and there's some things that we're just, I'm gonna miss, and it's not that I'm doing it to be intentionally omisive or, or if that's a word, of the board. I'm not trying to omit the board um on these things. So I, I wanted to clear that up. I did want Linda to come in and I don't know if Jordan's in, but Jordan's been doing a phenomenal job. Uh we wanted to provide an update on where we are. We've gotten a tremendous amount of support from a lot of folks about the food services. And the thing I will say, and I'm saying this now, that we have to start thinking about now is when we hit that peak, because I have gotten a phone call from three, two superintendents on the Kansas side that have suspended operations because they're getting ready to hit their peak, and they don't want folks being exposed and none of their staff members being exposed. It's something that I think we're gonna have to have a conversation about as we approach May, when we get to that point where we're gonna hit the peak uh around this exposure peak. So I just think that putting it out there now is something that we need to be thinking about and talking about. Lawrence has closed um services uh as they go through this process. Wichita Superintendent called me today. I think she's getting ready to have that conversation. Topeka schools have already made the decision that they would suspend operations for two weeks and try to protect everybody. So it's just something that we wanna be prepared to talk about. So I'll pass it over to Linda, and I know Jordan Gordon is on the line, so he can update you all on where we are with this.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. I am going to let Mr. Gordon kind of lead this for us because he's been doing yeoman's work around this, and the conversation that we had as he begrudgingly sat at home on quarantine on Monday instead of coming into the office was that we needed to figure out a way to come back, come back in the safest possible manner for our students and our families and our employees, and make sure that we created a process that didn't result in where we were on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, where we potentially had a hundred and thirty people exposed. And so he has revamped the program, is ready to share with you where we're heading from here. So Jordan, I'll just let you take it.
Thank, thank you, Linda. Uh good afternoon to um Board Chair, Board Members, Dr. Bedell, and the members of the Cabinet. Um I'm Jordan Gordon, Director of Food Services for the Kansas City Public Schools. Before we get into the nuances of kind of what we've done to restructure and reevaluate our safety precautions as well as our food distribution as a whole, I want to start with, you know, that, um piggybacking on what Dr. Bedell said. Number one and first and foremost, I really wanna thank uh him, Dr. Collier, Mrs. Quinley, for the undoubted support. Um this is a very fluid situation, and we know that and we keep hearing that. But I think when you're on the ground and you're in it, it's even more fluid. Um at four forty-six PM, there's one situation, by ten minutes later, we're in a totally different atmosphere, dealing with a new set of challenges. So I really appreciate their openness and accessibility throughout all of this. I've been able to reach out to them and keep open lines of communications with regards to uh where we are, things that we're um receiving, information about our community, about the um Health Department measures that we need to take to ensure our employees are, uh above all, safe in their work. Um so as we get into this food distribution, I want to start also with just saying, this is what we do. I'm very passionate about this. I love serving the Kansas City Public Schools community and the students therein. Um most of all, I'm very passionate about our employees, our food service workers. They are the backbone of this work around food distribution, food storage, food movement, and all of those things. So um please keep in mind, uh Board Members, that, you know, as, as we go through this, I'm going to um hopefully hit most of the concerns and most of the things that have come up, but also um willing and open-minded about any suggestions or our um questions that you may have at the very end. Uh first and foremost, um forgive me as well, because this is my first time trying to navigate this part of it. Move the screen down. Do I have control, Joe?
And I don't know, Jordan, you'll be able, you'll be able to turn pages, but there you go.
Okay, I guess. There we go. So looking thirty thousand feet in the air, when we started this, um this model, it was really all hands on deck, and we, we brought together our leadership team in food services to understand what our challenges were, to understand what our um anticipated outcomes would be, and then tried to coordinate all the resources that we could to support this. Um this was a, a very manual and a very physical um process for our team. We, we basically went through all of our schools. We started in all of our schools, trying to consolidate resources to ensure that we mitigated or tried to reduce the amount of spoilage and loss to our existing products while um getting tho, getting those resources kind of reallocated to our central kitchen. And our central kitchen, it is true, we had potentially uh upwards of a hundred and thirty employees that were potentially quarantined or exposed to the presumptive COVID-19 uh employee, myself included. For context, what, what we um what we uh did was, we had a rotating schedule. So we never had a hundred employees in any one kitchen operation at any given time. However, with a fluid rotating schedule to ensure that our, we work with the minimum number of people, we scheduled about nineteen, twenty percent of our staff on any given day, which, which turned out to be about twenty-five people in total. Um and the cafe at the Paseo and King, it was kind of a unique setup because it allowed us to go through and we use tape, we use markers, we, we moved furniture around to ensure that our employees were, had six-plus feet of distance in between them as they worked. However, as, as most of you know, food service is a very active environment, it's a very fluid operation. So naturally, there are several impasses throughout the day, throughout the work. Um so once we um became aware that we needed to quarantine, we immediately started working behind the scenes to just, to determine what is the safest um and best approach to getting food service back up and going again. So what you have in front of you is our, our COVID-19 is what we've coined it on CNS organizational chart. This um is kind of a versatile view of what our structure and what our reporting is gonna look like during this pandemic and while we're still serving uh food. It, a couple of big things to kind of look at this, and we'll get into the nuances on the next slide, but most importantly, it allows us to segregate our employees to working in smaller, no more than five-person uh teams in separate kitchens. So if you can imagine, hopefully we never experience that again, but in the event that we do, um we now can isolate and, and better control our shutdown measures or corrective actions that we need to take to protect our employees. So that, in that worst-case scenario, it's just five people in one site being shut down, um being shut down and quarantined for, for that duration, which still allows all of, all of our other sites to continue operating or potentially moving to another site that we can open up in short order. Um all of the leaders for these areas, eh, names that are listed, they are all working, again, in uh separate locations. So we all are kind of creating new office spaces where we will be stationed in the event, again, that someone uh becomes presumed positive and we need to quarantine. No one leader, as of Monday, all of us, again, including myself, had to go home and, and effectively shut down. Under this model, it allows us to keep some level of on-the-ground leadership and supervision of what we're doing to ensure that our, our employees, community, and any volunteers are, are really safe. Our next slide is going to, as soon as it catches up with me. There we go, our distribution transition. So our next slide talks about our distribution. We have gone down, as you can see from the far left, we're going down from the four-site distribution to a three-site uh model distribution. The days will go from Monday and Wednesdays to Tuesdays and Thursdays. The time that we're recommending is gonna be that ten-to-two window. What's critical about that time is that that is very consistent. In fact, it is still very generous in comparison to any other food distribution uh location around the city with, with, with regards to accessibility and uh window of opportunity for our families to actually participate. On Tuesday and Thursday, the big shift from going to Monday and Wednesday to Tuesday and Thursday, it just allows us the adequate time to safely reset, um reassess, and then ultimately prepare um should we find ourselves in a product shortage or running behind on prep. We just have that initial day to get things going uh properly. On the East, Northeast, and King Elementary, um on, on those, the biggest change is that we've, we've kind of removed Central High School and we've removed A-Slower, largely because of the um traffic and the participation at those sites. And then moreover, because we have a huge saturation of community food distribution sites in and around both of those areas. And we'll see kind of a, a running list of all the accessible uh food distribution sites that are where, where we have the A-Slower and central locations. Um East and Northeast eh are still very strong, very high-traffic areas. That's where we see most of our family participation. And on that north side, King gives us the flexibility to offer something south or more south than, than the others. Um and it, uh the, all of those, of course, come with the facilities that are complimentary and conducive for ease of use, um safe, safeguarding our employees as well as the communities. They all have kind of drive-up curb, curbside model uh capabilities that we will be using, and then most of all, storage capacity with regards to refrigeration. So under, under the original model, us having those four sites, we ran into a lot of issues around being able to move product and safely keep product in its um preferred temperature. So these sites all have adequate kitchen space for us to kind of work around and support the family needs. So essentially, each one of those sites will become a self-operating site with a cafeteria manager, three food prep staff, and a site supervisor, which is a, a member of our leadership team. Distribution and door delivery service. That is something that I, and, and full disclosure, we're still working to refine. We're still working to get that right. Uh we know that there is a strong need. Uh at our, at our peak, we were sending out fifty-eight hundred meals um via door delivery service on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays under our initial model. Excuse me. Our goal is to kind of refine that and better identify which of those um families that we were serving under that model, we, we actually need to continue serving because of whether the students have an IEP, they're sped, they're disabled, or um any, any other um circumstance, environmental circumstances that would warrant a door delivery service. So I'm working with uh Mrs. Quinley and Chris Walls in our transportation uh area to kind of clean that part up and, and refine it as we go. But the biggest piece is going to be ensuring that we still offer that type of service to our families who actually need that door delivery. Our takeaways from this is, is kind of the, the big learning points that we've had since um the Monday, Monday incident is we're reducing the staff and we're separating them to their own individual uh workstation. So again, to isolate if we have to uh in those cases where we need to quarantine people. Uh we're gonna identify our child nutrition service supervisors at each site that will, that will be on, on staff to kind of promote social distancing, to ensure that our employees are not becoming too comfortable with each other, that uh we, we see a breakdown in systems or, or safety measures as a whole, and then ultimately food, food safety. Uh one thing that is, that has not um been as fluid as our real-life challenges on the field is our legislative and program guideline restraint. So we are still working with our state agencies day in and day out. I, I can't tell you how many times I've, I've had conversations just today around what our new program, a program guideline changes are, what do we need to submit in order to receive a reimbursement, what do we need to offer to ensure that the meals are still registered as compliant? And then most of all, the monitoring uh and administrative function that is tied to what we do uh for the state purposes. Now we have a site supervisor who is trained um in FFSP Summer Feeding uh Service Program through DHSS at each site, so they're content experts on the program guidelines, and they'll also be able to perform all of the administrative um functions in terms of reporting at the site and send that to our main office where we will then consolidate and then do our, our usual claim process and claim reimbursement with the state. Um I have confirmed with our Director of Custodial Services, Mr. O'Phill, we will have a custodial staff working at each one of our sites. They will be in charge of our uh cleaning and sanitation, and that will take place. Um the routine sanitation will be every two hours. Every two hours, when we've essentially filled a load, we'll clear the uh tables, we'll wipe down everything, we'll sanitize. Um it, it may sound trivial, but we actually have hand-washing breaks uh incorporated into the daily schedule to ensure that employees are remaining um very conscious and aware and proactive in our own self-handling practices. Um and then the big piece is that, you know, this still allows us to operate around twenty percent of our staff on any given day, but they're just dispersed equally among these, these different locations. Um next slide. And these next few slides are just um a, a summary, kind of a, a look glance to let you know that we've done and are continuing to do a lot of our research around where our current distribution sites are in and around the Kansas City uh public schools uh geographic fences. So I have been on conversation, in conversations with several of our other school district leaders, um our food, food, nonprofit food distribution sites um in and around our area. We're coordinating a conference call tomorrow. Uh so all of us leaders are gonna get on a call and, and just start talking through some of the the learning pain points, the uh best strategies and the best approach, approach to do this. And then most of all, uh what are we going to do in the event where we're faced with a COVID-19 employee? Um that is, that is, you know, the imminent fear that we all have. We're trying our best to, to mitigate that and reduce those risks. However, it is still real. So as it stands right now, our plan is kind of layered with some level of protection against a total shutdown that we just experienced. But it's, again, with community spread, our families go home every day and their, their risk is more susceptible there than it is uh around their, their coworkers and, and our, our established environment. Next slide. And then, again, this is just a continuation, just um more, more size, just to show everyone in one, one look that we have a lot of resources being poured out into the city. Um my biggest challenge is to bring all of these resources and leaders together and work of food distribution so that we can leverage it and be most effective and efficient without increased risk of community spread or uh a complete loss of service to any one pocket within our boundaries.
Jordan, I, I, uh, before you go to the questions component, uh I want to, I don't know, echo here. I wanted to uh just to, uh Linda, there are a couple people really stepped up to help us, and, and one of them was uh Ray Towns came back and reached out to us, support us. I know Blue Springs wanted support. We had a tremendous amount of support. You guys, did you pick like a thousand sacks yesterday from someone?
Yeah, we picked up a thousand milk kits from a, from a church all the way up in the, the Northland. So the, the outpour of the community has been real. Prior to, to this uh meeting, I just got off the phone with a, a community member who has direct ties to the Constantino's family, the Hen House families, those paper goods that we were once worried about. Um he, he told me, hey, if you don't mind a, a store logo being on it, I'll make sure that supply keeps going. So we, we are impeccably supported by the community in this effort. Any questions?
Uh Board Members, I can't always see you, so if you want to go ahead and um ask your questions, we'll try to be one at a time as we go.
Mr. Gordon, thank you very much for your presentation. This is Rita Cortez. Um when we were in conversation about a week ago, there were also some um concerns expressed about supply chain and access to uh food product that was distributable. Would you be able to share with us um kind of the view today versus uh the view from, from last week?
Yeah, so we, we, our prime food vendor is US Foods. It's, it's a national organization, billions and billions in assets and resources. And um our challenge has been uh for them, the huge pivot that every school, every restaurant has had to take with really no, no advance notice as to how we're switching our models, what supplies and what products are best supportive of this type of, of packaging and distribution. So uh as of today, actually, I, I spoke with another uh food service leader in our community who has a, who has the same prime food vendor as I, and she was expressing the exact same hurdles that we're having. They have fifteen food distribution sites open in our area, and she struggles with getting um adequate supplies. So I can tell you from an organizational standpoint at US Foods, they're, they're no different than any other um major company. They, they've reduced staff by thirty percent. They've reduced routes uh across the, across the country. They're down about sixty percent in total revenue year-to-date in their organization. So their approach has been trying to conserve their cash flows while reducing their loss, and that has resulted in um basically, they're not sourcing any more products to come into their warehouse. They're liquidating all of the, the products they have on shelf in their distribution centers. And what that causes is that most of us in Kansas City Public Schools, we have a large buying power with them. But even we experience hurdles. It's not always a complete outage, as much as it is sometimes the, the logistics and the transportation hurdles that product is. Right now I have twenty-five hundred emergency meals sitting on a dock in Dallas, Texas. Um the product is there, the product is available, but with reduced routing and altered transportation abilities, we just can't get it in our local area. So um where we sit today, however, is we received a, a large shipment on last Thursday right before this shut down. I'm confident that we have enough product on hand to support our families through this upcoming weekend and, as well as um the following week. From there, um US Foods has has been gracious enough to allow me to um go into their food buying guide and pre-purchase um items at a bulk, much significantly higher bulk than we normally do. And that, that is going to be tremendous in allowing us to continue and sustain a model that works uh for us. Uh second to that, uh Ms. Cortez, is the food types that we're actually sourcing and buying. So we are, we are really, really trying to keep a safety and sanitation uh mind first about this work. So that does reduce some of the items that we have. I know that some of my colleagues some of the items that we have. I know that some of my colleagues are doing a, a small percentage of hot meals throughout the day, particularly at lunch, but you see that more commonly as some of the more smaller outfits where numbers are much lower. I did a survey across just about every school district in our major metropolitan, as well as reaching out to St. Louis for a demographic comparison as well. Kansas City is, is three and four times higher in terms of meal distribution. On average, you know, we're, we're serving, excuse me, more than 30,000 meals per week right now in our, our local other school districts. There, I think the closest was Lee Summit, surprisingly, and they were right around 15,000 meals per week. But after that, it drops down to five and 6,000 meals per week, if that. So we are, we're truly, truly, truly working with our vendors to solidify what products that we can ascertain, and we're making the appropriate subs, trying to stay in compliance with our, our current meal pattern guidelines as well.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions? I know, I think Dr. Bedell might have a second component to this update. I'm not sure. So.
I have. Patty, this is Manny. I got a couple of questions.
Okay.
So I understand the PPE component, right, is, is ideal, that we have the N95 masks, and that I think there's a shipment on its way potentially. What happens or what's our timeframe for us to run out of that PPE, and what are we going to do if we're not able to get that shipment?
On PPE, as it relates to our staff, I know Ms. Quinley may need to chime in here as well, but as it relates to our staff, when we resume, every employee is required to wear their, their mask and gloves. We don't, in food service, have a shortage of any kind of gloves. Mask is kind of the hot commodity right now. We were fortunate to receive a large donation of, of masks on our last operating day last week. So I don't see within the framework of food distribution and food prep, our small groups running out in the near future. But once that does happen, obviously, we're going to have to make another pivot around safe practices and, and safe approach to the work.
Yeah, Mr. Gordon is right. We've really tried to, I told the cabinet the other day, when, when those come into my hands, I'm treating them like the gold they are right now. And we've been lucky to hit little pockets of availability of N95s and then donated fabric masks that an employee can take home and launder at night and reuse. So while, you know, it may not always be an N95 because of supply, right now, we are doing okay, but we're trying to make sure we prioritize those toward food service workers who are going to work over and over again, and who are going to be in contact with larger groups of people as public come to visit, and our IT staff who are working the walk-in help desk, who are doing that same. But as groups need them, they call and they ask. I have about 20 left in my office, so we're starting to hit a low point, but we tap into one another's supplies in the meantime on those N95s until we can get those others here.
So a couple more questions here on the food side. We've explored, I know Linda and I and several others have had conversation around this pandemic EBT. I'm taking off that previous hat and asking from the district's perspective, what financial impact do we perceive that could have? I mean, does that take dollars that we would otherwise directly receive and then allocate them to the EBT process, or how does that work? And then also, in terms of access, do our kids who are from undocumented families, does that create barriers if we transition to a program like that?
Jordan, do you want to take that, or?
Sure, I'll take that. So the PEBT, the pandemic EBT for our SNAP, Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, the state has not, as of, as of today, last time I checked, has not accepted a formal application that we're waiting for from DESI that once they push down to us, we can help facilitate that process. But, and it's kind of a two-pronged approach. To answer you the first question, no, it does not direct or pull from any additional revenue that the district currently receives or has access to. This is a mere, mere, mere effort from the COVID, COVID release legislation to try to assist families who would otherwise receive, have offset meal costs because of breakfast and lunch, assist families with, with additional resources to secure food for their children. Based on our reimbursement rate, what it, what our families will look at is nearly $500 additional per child to their household if they're already receiving SNAP benefits, once, once we have the application approved by DESI. From that point, if we have any families who have experienced a loss of household income or need to apply for SNAP benefits, there is a certification process that, again, they would still need to apply for SNAP benefits, become approved, and once they're approved, they would then have to circle back to my, my area to receive a certified letter stating their child is receiving free lunch. If the families are already on free lunch, which based on our CEP and ISP percentages, I identify student percentage, we, we have a significant amount of families that already receive SNAP, and once that application is approved by DESI, then they will automatically receive the, their pro ratio of increase for, for food.
But I think, Mr. Barco, one of the misses, and Jordan, you'll have to correct me if I'm wrong, families have to apply for that, which means they have to sort of self-identify themselves, and there's probably a void as to some of our undocumented children and whether or not those families choose to try to access those dollars.
That is absolutely right. I think we, we might need to craft some, some language and messaging for our migrant population to ensure that they understand that there are no additional checks required. I, I do know the, the innate fear that comes around filling out forms and putting things of, of employment status, residential status for some of our families may be somewhat difficult, but it is an absolutely necessary component to receiving the additional SNAP benefits.
Are there any allowances either from the district or the program specifically if it comes into play? And I, and I say that because the full force of the congressional office is going to weigh down on the USDA, so I imagine things are going to change pretty dramatically, and I just want to be prepared when that does. Is there an opportunity for either that same type of support to either be allocated to a community entrusted organization or directly from the district to supplement what perhaps EBT might not be able to do in that capacity? That's something creative. It's not obviously something we currently have in place.
Yeah, you're absolutely, absolutely correct. There is nothing in place or no provisions that allow the school district to become a conduit for those resources for our families. I, I think there's, there's, I don't know if it's intentional or not intentional, but there, there's some honest confusion around the legislative language because it, it clearly ties our family's SNAP benefits to their breakfast and lunch status. So they are separate, but the legislative language does kind of provoke the, this anxiety and stress around, how do I get this and how do I know this? And we are seeing an influx of families reaching out to me for next steps guidance.
I'm sorry, I'm going to jump in for a moment because I know we are, we still have a component and we have additional items. Is there any other board member who has a highly urgent question that they would like to ask at this moment because we still have additional COVID and, again, a full agenda?
Hey, Patty, this is Nate. So a quick question. I don't think we necessarily need an answer today, but I think it would be an important sort of action item for our board secretary to track. But around, so Jordan, first of all, let me say thank you to you, and please extend from all of us, because I know we'll all agree on this, our sincere thanks and appreciation for all the work that you guys are doing. I mean, this is near and dear to all of our hearts, right? Feeding our kids and families and making sure that they have the support that they need from the district. So thank you, thank you, thank you. It's sort of a Jordan slash Linda question, or Ms. Quinley, sorry, Mr. Gordon, question around business continuity and disaster recovery planning. So I think it would be good for the board to sort of get some insight into the current plan with full appreciation for the fact that it did not probably conceive of a pandemic. But I think it's incredibly important that we begin to very methodically track our learnings from this particular incident and build that in a very thoughtful way into our BCDR plan and so that we can hit the ground running a little bit faster the next time, because there will likely be a next time. It may even be this year, right? And, and just build that program out so that we're, we're prepared and we have some, some really good information from the experience that we're going through today. So no question there, but would like to see the BCDR plan and then talk about how we're going to build our learnings into that.
So that, let's go ahead and do that. We'll take note of that, and the board secretary will take note of that, and we'll add that for future conversation and requests from the administration. Dr. Bedell, I'm going to go ahead and turn this back to you if that's okay with my colleagues.
Are you muted, Dr. Bedell?
Yeah, I am. I need, I was looking in the wrong area. So Dr. Shepherd is going to provide an academic update. And on the agenda, we also have a graduation senior progress update. That's going to be interwoven into her update under the academic, so we can scratch that one off as we get under C. And yeah, we're, we're ready to go here. Wait a minute, I'm sorry, Linda, did we have the IT? Did we, we, we want, do we want to give an IT update, or, I'm just saying, I'm worried about time now. But I think we're also wanted to, we wanted to include that as a part of your areas that you're covering, and then bring Dr. Shepherd in to give a quick update on where we are from an academic standpoint.
Yeah. Joe is ready tonight to give a brief update on how we've transitioned, sort of similar, and Nate, it goes to Mr. Hogan, it goes to your question on how we're pivoting and making sure that we don't find ourselves in another situation where we cannot operate. So Joe is ready to share kind of what they've been doing to pivot and make sure we continue services in IT around COVID. Are you there, Joe?
Yep, I'm here. So I'll go quick. I know we're pressed for time. So the first area where we made a swift pivot was in our tech support model. So we very quickly modified our help desk to take in technical calls as well as food distribution calls and district-wide questions, and we created a phone number 418-Food for anybody that needed food assistance. We also have the phone number 418-Help for anyone, students, parents, staff that needs technical support. Our call volume on Help Desk, on Help Desk has gone up about 200% since this started, and after we do our next Chromebook distribution, we're expecting to see that increase by another third. So to go along with that, we were able to get a technical solution in place that allowed the bulk of our staff to work from home and answer those Help Desk calls. So we have about 20 folks on the phone whenever we're not doing device distribution or other types of onsite support. Additionally, we put a tech solution in place so that anyone who emails our Help Desk, that automatically creates a new ticket in our new ticketing and inventory system. Fortunately, we are already standing up our new ticketing and inventory system when we went into lockdown, so we just expedited that by about a week, and that was really well timed for us. Additionally, we're working on student Wi-Fi, so we're working on a very comprehensive plan for student Wi-Fi. Part one of that is, of course, getting our hotspots in that the board approved last meeting. Our 3,000 T-Mobile hotspots did hit a shipping delay in customs, so we are expecting those to be here early next week. Additionally, we're working on a pilot with our school buses that already have Wi-Fi on there, and we'll be going into that pilot next Monday at three locations. We worked with STA to make sure that the equipment that's already on the buses should be good. They subnet, subnetted off those APs so it wouldn't interfere with the other network that we have for our buses. Additionally, we've been working with the library, Parks and Rec, and the city to make sure that they have the equipment and things that they need to do, external Wi-Fi at those locations as well. And also, we worked with Charter's leadership so that they would open up Spectrum Wi-Fi to the whole city of Kansas City. So all the Spectrum Wi-Fi hotspots that are in the city of Kansas City are now wide open. You don't have to have a Spectrum account or a Charter account in order to get access to Spectrum Wi-Fi throughout the city. Additionally, we got some orders in, 1,000 Chromebooks, 1,000 iPads, the hotspots, 3,000 T-Mobile, 2,000 phone hotspots that'll be here hopefully in May, 5,000 hotspots that'll be here hopefully in July. We distributed about 700 Chromebooks to our middle schoolers this week, and we are working on our next Chromebook distribution plan for grades K through eight. And I sent that plan to Linda and Dr. Bedell and Dr. Shepherd and Kelly for review today. We are hitting some issues, mainly it's shipping delays, as we've already mentioned. Jordan's having those issues with shipping delays. We're having those issues with shipping delays. The only other thing I really want to highlight is we've reconfigured our department's mission to three primary things, which is supporting our non-traditional teaching and learning, food distribution, any support that's needed there, as well as keeping the business of the district going through all this work from home and, and all of this remote work. So that's all I have.
Excellent.
Thank you. Dr. Bedell, I would like to have Dr. Shepherd go ahead and do her piece, and then if there's some questions that need to be asked now by the board after that presentation, we can do that. And then I can also encourage the board to submit questions in writing. That way we'll be able to make sure we provide adequate time for our Blueprint 2030 discussion.
Absolutely, and they're interrelated, so the questions generally will go hand-in-hand with these topics. So Dr. Shepherd, we'll pass it over to you.
Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's well. I'm going to present to you tonight our virtual learning plan, and know that this has had, it's taken on a lot of different faces. We think, we finally got it to where we want to launch with it, because as we get information, and just as Jordan said, we get information daily, our, our plans have to shift, and we just try to pivot in a positive way with whatever the, the, the new plans, the new information is. So, okay. So what we had for the first two weeks, we had work packets for pre-K through 12. And remember, that was a review. We talked about that last week, that we would only be doing a review. Then April 7th, which was, would have been yesterday, we actually have started publishing weekly task calendars for our students and for our parents to use. And then on April 13th, what we would like to do is we would like to start asking our teachers to just record a daily message to their kids. We know that many of them are already interacting with some of their kids, but just making sure that our teachers are providing an opportunity for the kids to hear their voices every day. Beginning April 20th, we're going to continue with the weekly task calendars, but we'll start with our robust teacher PD. We realize that we need to build this out, and that's something that, because we're building the plane as we fly it, that's something that we hadn't had an opportunity to really be thoughtful about, but we think we've got the plan that we want to go forth with, and I will show that to you tonight. And then May 4th through May 22nd, our K through eight teachers will actually be doing virtual teaching daily. And what our hope is, is that we'll have all of our devices and our hotspots by then, so we'll be able to reach majority of our children. And we know we're not reaching all of them right now, and, and we're not reaching a large percentage of them. Then our, here's what a weekly task calendar looks like. So if you were to visit our website, you would see that we posted this, and this is daily work and daily review for our students with tasks assigned for them to do, and they're still able to access their teacher right now if they need them. But we know we go to our robust PD model, we're going to have to revisit teacher office hours so we can make sure that we're being fair to our teachers and we're giving them time for PD, time to plan, and also time to interact with their students. And so then our high school virtual plan, we're going to go on through May 1st with high school instruction. Our high schoolers already have their devices, and so what we'll do is we'll make sure that they're continuing to do the work so that we can be able to produce grades by the, by May 1st. And we have come up with the whole harmless model for grades, and that means that a student cannot receive a grade less than their third quarter grade. They can only receive a grade that is more than that. And we have put together a plan for our high schools to review with their staff, just so that our kids can know and, and be able to access whatever it is they need in order to get a better grade, or if they're satisfied with the grade that they have, we're going to hold harmless and we'll give them that grade. And they'll get their robust teacher PD after the kids are done. So that starts on May 24th, and it goes all the way through May 22nd. So we'll be able to provide them with a layer of training so that should this happen again, or should we? again or should we even have bad weather days? If we anticipate bad weather days, what are some things we can do so that we can continue with school? So, that's, those are the things that we're thinking about as we put the plan together. This is just an example of a weekly task calendar for high schools. So, we've done this again for K through 12 and we'll be doing this every week until we start back to our virtual instruction once we get the devices distributed.
Hey, Dr. Shepherd. Sorry to interrupt you. Can you go into presentation mode? The screen is pretty small, at least for me.
Okay.
Thank you. It was just hard to read some of the slides.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. And so, what you see here is a shell of what we want to do. And if you look here on the left side, you see that we need to, we want to provide content PD, but we also want to provide digital learning PD. And then, we want teachers to do some horizontal collaboration with cadres and some vertical, which is what we would use Fridays for. And then, and so, they get their hour of PD for content, an hour for digital learning. They have office hours and planning time in the afternoons. Then, on Fridays, all day, we're not teaching, we're actually doing collaborative meetings, but they still have the task calendar that they can access. This is the digital learning plan that we came up with for K-2. So, what you see here is week one, you've got your technology training that they would get and then you've got their content training that they would get here. And then, Friday, you see here, we're looking at cadres. And again, our PD department is going to put together cadres so that teachers from across the district, and that would be maybe Truist, Melcher, and Banneker. Second grade team may collaborate. And then, we'll also do vertical teaming, which means that they will, a K, a 1, and a 2 teacher team would meet so that they could look at what happens before and what happens after a particular grade level. Then, when we look at 3 through 6, we're doing the same thing where they get a string here of the things that we feel like are necessary for all of our teachers to know how to do using digital learning. And then, here, using content. And these are all content mediums that we have to provide support for our kids and they're all digital learning tools, but more so in a particular content. So, we want to show them how to use that and how to embed them in some of the things that we are, some of the standards that we have already covered. Then, for 7th and 8th grade, here's their digital learning here. And then, they have a math strand, an ELA strand, a science strand, and a social studies strand. And our content coordinators would actually be providing this. One of the things that we had to learn about the whole virtual schooling is that, and people teaching from at home, is that it can't be, you can't mandate a regular school day. So, what we'll do, we'll make sure that every teacher is responsible for taking these courses, but how, if, we'll record them, but if they decide to take them in the afternoon, the loose is they'll get a chance to work around, work with their schedules based on what's necessary. And then, the tight is on Fridays, we're not doing any of the teaching. We're actually doing the training and the professional learning community type model. But some of them in the mornings are just unable to engage. And so, that's the reason why we are going to record all of these and we actually have a process in place to where we can determine whether or not they have taken these courses. But our, but our big tight is making sure that everybody has the same information, is getting the same training, no matter what time they decide to take it. If you decided to take it with CIPD when they're presenting in the morning, great. If you decide that your office hours are going to be in the morning and you're going to take this in the afternoon and look at the recording, fine. Here is week 2 for our 7th and 8th grade. And I do want to say that high school will get this once they're done with school. Their schooling should be done May 1st, so by May 4th, they'll be getting the same type of PD. We'll have one for them drawn up by then so that our teachers can have what they need to plan. Senior recovery, we are working with our high school principals. We met with them last Friday to look at a bunch of items that we felt like we needed to cover, to ensure that our seniors are graduating and to ensure that all of our kids are on track. We have not reached all of our kids. We still don't have 100% participation, but we are continuing to work and we're continuing to try to locate the children. Principals have a senior spreadsheet. I actually had a copy of that spreadsheet here, but I took it off because it had too much personal information for students on there and so I could share that at another time if I need to. And then, tomorrow, we have a meeting with each individual high school to look at senior tracking and then to look at the layers of intervention. And here's our graduation PLC for tomorrow, what things that we're going to be looking at with the kids. We've got a red, yellow, green system here, graduation tiers of opportunity, which is what I spoke to you about, how they'll be able to recover grades. You will default to whatever your grade was in the third grading period, but you can get higher. And then, IRCs. Desi has said that they can take their industry-recognized credential exams all the way through August 30th. We need high schools to know and understand that and the AP exam update. And then, I do want to show you an example of what it is that we're giving to our high schools. So, and let me put this in. Slide show from current slide. So, let's see. What you'll see here, should have went to the front. What you see here is all of them will get, this is our district dashboard. Right now, it's telling us how many are not on target, how many are on target, how many are on target with the grade point average of 3.0 or above and with Lincoln College Preparatory, and then the grand total here in this column. So, the 2-point grade points and then how many kids are there, then the 3-point plus and how many kids are there, and then these are the ones that are just not on target. And we have that by school. And so, every school will get this tomorrow and they've already done a lot of this work. So, what we're going to do is just merge our data to make sure that we're all seeing the same things and we're going to use Dr. Woodley's team to help us continue pushing out to reach the children who we haven't. But you see here that, I mean, we are looking at most of our kids being on track, but we have an excellent opportunity here to get all of them on track. And so, it's just about us tomorrow hearing who's not on track, making sure we have the right ones because some of these that we've captured in here, they may have actually found. And then, pushing that list out to Dr. Woodley's team and looking at some of the supports that we have in place. We have Grad Lab that our kids can take. We also have the tiered intervention model that I just showed you where they can make up classes. And then, teachers also have some things in place to work with the students. So, for us, it's just about making sure that we contact them and we help them to understand it. We also contact their parents and let them know that they're not on target for graduation and these are some things and options that we have in place so that they can be on target for graduation. And I'm just going to show you an example. Each school, we have this for each school, Anderson, and so they will receive this again tomorrow as we merge our data to ensure that we're doing our due diligence to reach every child and to try and graduate, try and raise our graduation rate and make sure that all of our children are graduating on time. And some of them may have to graduate in the summer, that's fine, we still get credit for them, but we still need a plan for them. And so, that's what we'll start tomorrow's meeting with our high school principals talking about and then we'll start meeting with them weekly from here.
We're getting a lot of feedback on here, so I'm not sure. Dr. Bedell, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay.
That concludes that portion and then we just had a communication update, but I know there may be some questions.
So, I'd like to really keep this questions and the answers extremely succinct because we've got an important component of our agenda that we need to turn to. We also have the opportunity to send questions in writing to the superintendent so that those questions can be answered for us as a board in the Friday update. So, I'd like to invite any of my colleagues who have a question related to the academic program and the outline of how we have pivoted at this point. I don't hear any questions. I know my colleagues well and they will have questions. So, what I'm going to do is encourage everyone to send your questions in. The board secretary will make these slide presentations, send those to us via email so we'll have them to peruse more readily.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll give a quick update on our communication, update you on what we're planning on sending out tomorrow and then the update. I believe we'll do another update on Sunday or Monday, I forget the cycle, but Kelly, wait, I'll give it to you now.
Great. Good evening, everyone. You all received as a board an email before the meeting that outlined the framework for our communications for tomorrow as well as FAQs. And I hope what you'll see in that document is really kind of a wrap-up of all the information you just received from Linda, from Jordan, from Joe, from Dr. Shepherd and team. Again, those are just going to highlight, this communication is just going to highlight well wishes from Dr. Bedell written in his voice and tone so that our public's hearing from our superintendent, the device and the hotspot information, the food relaunch, as well as that ramp up to digital learning. So, again, take a look at that communication. That's a draft that you have and we will be going public tomorrow with all of the things we've just discussed. And again, as you've been aware, our website is being updated on a daily, almost hourly basis with all of this information. So, you'll be able to go find this sprinkled throughout our website as well as we launch this public release of information tomorrow, as well as an Espanol site and then other multiple languages, working with our language services team to make sure that we are targeting those families who speak another language and provide them their communication and their language. So, that's a very quick, down and dirty update about the communications, but I hope that the email that you received gives you a lot more context to wrap up everything that you just heard.
Thank you. That would conclude my COVID-19 update, Madam Chair.
So, Dr. Bedell, I'm going to, oh, go ahead. Did someone was asking a question?
Yes, sir. I was just going to ask, this is Manny. Kelly, on your side, the breakdown, I guess, of communications for tomorrow did not include an ELL update, so I just wanted to make sure that you noted. I know you just noted that, but I made a note that it was just sped that was in there, so just want to give you a heads up.
That's a good point, Mr. Abarka. So, we either might have a specific ELL section or again, those languages are being targeted with specific communication from our language services team. So, I'll clarify that. Thanks for the tip.
Hey, Madam Chair, this is Nate. Just one super quick question. Kelly, got the note. Obviously, we haven't had a chance to really absorb it completely yet. I haven't looked at the FAQs at all, but one question that Jordan talked about, but just want to make sure that on our website or maybe in addition to the letter, we're going to talk about those students that are in sort of those south-ish zones. I know that we've talked about Martin Luther King Jr. Elementary being one of those, but if we can detail those other sort of harvester sites or other places where students have access to food distribution, particularly in the southern parts of the city, that might be helpful.
Received. Thanks for that note.
Yep. Thanks.
Okay, so, Dr. Bedell, I'm, again, I encourage my colleagues to send questions into the superintendent and I would like to turn it over to you for your superintendent open items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I will pass this over to Kelly and Shannon Jacks, our Blueprint 2030. We want to provide the board with some of the findings from our Hanover study and then give you all an opportunity to provide input or, you know, questions that you may want need clarification on. Keep in mind that this is a piece of what we're trying to do with Blueprint 2030. There will be additional presentations and a lot of other engagement, so this is not the end-all and be-all for Blueprint 2030.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Bedell. Joe, can you pull up the shorter slides for Kelly and I before we turn it over to the Hanover team? So, tonight, you're going to hear the first piece of our assessment work. So, excited for that. Before the Hanover team presents their results on market research, Kelly and I just want to give you a little bit more information about where we are in the process, especially as it relates to how it's been impacted by COVID-19. So, this slide just has a little bit of information regarding our, what is Blueprint 2030? I'm not sure who's controlling. Is it me? Oh, I am controlling.
Joe.
Okay. Sorry. Okay. Maybe.
Need some help.
So, this is our process and schedule pre-COVID-19 and on the next slide, we'll show you the changes that we expect over the next couple of months. I am clicking on the, there we go. Okay. So, you'll see we're still in Phase 1, planning to wrap it up in May. So, our assessment work's getting done and then we'll have at the next several board meetings, updates both from our third parties and from the in-house teams that have been working on things. I know we've been really targeting to have recommendations to the board. That was originally planned for September, October in the fall. You know, we don't think we'll be too far off that schedule so long as we are able to interact in person with community members to get their feedback on the various stages, but we're really targeting October, November so that we could still continue with implementation starting in winter 2021 and prep for the school year '22 in the fall. So, the next slide is just a reminder of all of the assessment areas that we have been working on. So, you can see there in blue, but the market research report is really falling under that student retention recruitment work that we've got some in-house work happening in that area as well. And so, over the next couple of weeks, you're going to see a lot of data coming out from all of this. And then, we're starting to work on synthesizing that, so seeing where you have some commonalities or cause and effect across the different reports so that as we get into goal setting, we're looking at that comprehensively. And that's all I have. And so, Kelly's going to go into community engagement impacts.
So, yes, we've been keeping up to date on the timeline for Blueprint 2030 as far as it concerns the engagement of our community. This first slide touched a little bit about how we've adjusted what that in-person engagement looks like due to the fact of COVID-19 letting us not be able to be in person. So, we have our first advisory team meeting that was scheduled for March, rescheduled for next week, April the 16th. That's a team of about 100 community folks between members, parents, staff members, principals, teachers, who were engaging to help us be an advisory team around Blueprint 2030. Also, we were thinking about what a gallery walk may look like to go over some of the testing of priorities and goal suggestions, really just looking at how we can do that if we're still social distancing or not able to meet in person. That might have to pivot a little bit, but it's still part of the plan at this point. You can see the board meeting in late May, going to the internal assessment, KCPS internal assessment findings. And then, you can also see throughout the summer, all of our advisory team meetings. We like the name BAT. We feel like we're Batman, trying to be superheroes, getting this work done. But you'll see the dates there through the June, July, midsummer, and August scenario alternatives. One of the things to note is thought exchange. We've talked a little bit about this with you previously. As a communications team and cabinet, we're looking at potentially using this platform. If we can't do that in-person engagement, it's a wonderful platform to engage the community through technology and through kind of a social aspect of ranking different thoughts and ranking different perspectives in the community. And then, you know, we really are gearing up for Summer Fest and what that looks like and then also using that Summer Fest opportunity as an opportunity for in-person engagement. So, we feel hopeful about Summer Fest and how we can use the almost 7,000, 8,000 people who can show up and participate in some sort of a feedback loop for us around Blueprint 2030. And then, the last slide just really shows you some snips of our website that we're continuing to update, closing the feedback loop, thinking about exit surveys for our engagement series, and just having the communications plan document there, some of the stakeholders that we're involving in the involving in the process. So without further ado, we're going to get to the meat of this presentation. We're very fortunate to have Garrett Bran and Megan Swirwinski with us. Both of them are from Hanover, who are going to walk through the Hanover slides with you this evening. Thank you for joining us, Garrett and Megan.
Thanks so much, Kelly. And good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having us join today. By way of introduction, Hanover Research is a custom research and data analytics firm based in Arlington, Virginia. We work with over 300 school districts across the country to gather feedback from stakeholders, analyze data, and identify best practices. And we've worked with KCPS for the last two years on a number of initiatives that are operations-focused. But as of late, we've been working with Shannon and Kelly on this series of projects in an effort to understand the factors that drive enrollment decisions, what changes are needed to retain and attract students, as well as the competitive landscape, including what differentiates KCPS from other school options in the area, and then general perceptions of KCPS. And Garrett's going to take some time now to walk through the various methodologies for these particular projects, as well as our key findings and recommendations.
Thanks, Megan, and good evening, everyone. It is great to be speaking with you all today. So as Megan said, in this presentation, I'll provide an overview of the research projects encompassed in our work and our overall findings and recommendations. For those of you who have already reviewed our full report, this will focus on more or less the first 15 pages or so of that report, along with some supporting slides included from later in the report. So we're planning to have questions at the end of this, and I'm going to be going through about 20 slides over the next 20 minutes. But if there are questions along the way, that would help with clarifying things. Please jump in and we can address them if appropriate. So our work comprised three separate studies to gain insight into perceptions of the district and families enrollment decision-making. The first study was a survey of current KCPS parents, local parents of non-KCPS students, parents of former KCPS students, and local parents of future school-age children. We administered the survey in English, Spanish, Swahili, and Burmese across the fall and winter, and ultimately received over 2,300 responses. This slide provides an overview of respondents to the family survey. As you can see, respondents represent a range of grade levels, school types, and enrollment patterns. In this presentation, I'll be discussing the results as broken out by the groups in the top left figure, which is based on the enrollment status of a respondent's child. One of the main comparisons I'll be highlighting throughout is between current KCPS parents and past KCPS parents, which refers to parents of a child who transferred out of a KCPS school. We'll also be referencing future parents, who are parents of a future school-age child coming into the kind of system or the community within the next kind of five to seven years or so. Turning to the next phase of the study, we have a survey of staff, of KCPS site-based staff, teachers, administrators, and others administered in January and February and receiving approximately 500 responses. This slide on the screen now provides an overview of the staff respondents. As you can see, teachers compose the majority of the responses, with teachers of earlier grades representing a greater share. And then the third study was a series of 11 focus groups and two in-depth interviews with parents in February, with parents, with instructional staff members at KCPS, and representatives of KCPS partner organizations, and school choice knowledgeable organizations. On the screen now, you can see the composition of the groups and the interviews, as well as the community organizations that participated. So diving into our principal findings and recommendations, one of the main findings coming out of this research as a whole is that when selecting a school for their child, families place the highest value and emphasis on the quality of education, particularly the quality of academic programs and curriculum and teachers. Accordingly, we recommend that the district emphasize maintaining and expanding high-quality academic programs and curriculum in the district. The quality of academic programs and curriculum is the most commonly cited academic-related factor that influences enrollment decisions among families, and second most common according to staff. Notably, parents of a child who transferred out of KCPS were more likely to indicate that overall educational quality affected their enrollment decision than those of a parent of a child who transferred into KCPS. Accordingly, staff, particularly neighborhood school staff, recommend prioritizing the improvement of academic rigor and the expansion of programs for students who struggle academically to attract and retain families. Similarly, focus group participants recommend programs that increase the level of personalization and rigor, again, particularly at the neighborhood schools, and resources to identify students in need of additional support. As these figures show, quality of education unsurprisingly is a top-ranked factor influencing family enrollment decisions, according both to parents on the left and to staff on the right. So in the parent survey, respondents were asked which of the following high-level factors on the left-hand side here influenced their and their child's decision to enroll at their child's current school or the school from which he or she graduated. This figure presents results of that question, broken out by the respondent's child's enrollment status. Those categories we reviewed a few slides ago. So as the first row indicates in this figure, approximately half of parents of a student currently enrolled in a KCPS school indicated that the quality of their child's education affected their most recent enrollment decision. In comparison of the past parents, i.e. parents who have taken a child out of a KCPS school, who have transferred out, 79% of these parents selected this factor as influential. Moreover, an even higher percentage of the local parents of future school-age children selected this factor. In the staff survey, respondents were asked if their school were to prioritize improving one of the areas listed in the left-hand column on the screen related to course offerings, which would they choose with the goal of better attracting and retaining families? This figure presents results for signature school staff and what we've referred to throughout the presentation and report as non-signature school staff, which encompasses neighborhood school staff, pre-K, site staff, and special or option school staff. So the results for staff of signature schools and staff of neighborhood and other schools were similar overall, with the principal exception that you can see in the top row, that non-signature staff were nearly twice as likely to indicate that their school should prioritize academic rigor in comparison with signature school staff. In the staff survey, respondents were also asked to identify special academic programs that if added or expanded at their school would help attract and retain families. This figure shows the percentage of staff members who selected each program type as their top-ranked choice, broken out by the staff grade band. So you can see that elementary school teachers are most likely to feel that their school would benefit from adding programs for struggling students, in comparison with 46% of middle school and 30% of and 30% of high school teachers. While this data point isn't included, on this slide, notably, non-signature school staff are twice as likely than signature school staff to select specialty programs for students who struggle academically as their top choice, for adding or expanding programs to attract or retain families. But staff across signature and non-signature schools both select that as their top option. Pardon me. Returning to the second bullet on the screen here. So in addition to focusing on improving and communicating the quality of academic programming and curricula, we had relatedly recommend the district continue to invest in the recruitment and retention of high-quality teachers and staff. Staff members perceive teacher quality as the most important academic-related factor affecting families' enrollment decisions, as well as a top strength for KCPS in comparison with local charter schools. Families also commonly cite the quality of teachers as influential in making enrollment decisions. In terms of offered solutions, focus group participants recommend that KCPS focus their efforts on staff retention by studying why teachers are leaving and adjusting policies so that first-year teachers are not placed in high-needs schools and classrooms. Another primary finding from this research is that behavior in classroom management is viewed as an area in need of improvement across the district and one that is linked to the perception of school safety. Accordingly, we recommend the district seek opportunities to provide additional behavioral support for students as part of a larger effort to improve school safety. While families are less likely to list behavioral supports in classroom management as influential factors in enrollment decisions, nearly half do cite school safety as a consideration. Over half of staff members also note that school safety is influential in families' school enrollment decisions. Additionally, staff report classroom management and effective behavioral supports as weaknesses of KCPS in comparison to local charter options. As this figure indicates, neighborhood school staff are more than twice as likely than signature school staff to believe that their school would most benefit from prioritizing behavioral programming and supports in the top row to attract and retain families. Again, this is the most commonly selected priority area for staff overall. This figure shows of the parents who indicated that their enrollment decisions were affected by school characteristics, the percentage of parents identifying each factor as influential in their decisions, again, broken out by the enrollment status. Looking at the fourth row, notably, parents of a child who transferred out of KCPS placed more emphasis on school safety when making their child's most recent enrollment decision than current KCPS parents. Parents of a future school-age child place even more emphasis on school safety. Parents of future school-age children are also more likely to place emphasis on sense of community within schools and level of parent involvement and outreach. Returning to recommendations related to behavior and classroom management and school safety, focus group participants suggest improvements to classroom management and discipline practices to improve perceptions of school safety and violence. They also suggest the establishment of multifaceted strategies to reduce negative student behavior, such as increasing trauma-informed practices, implementing a district-wide social-emotional learning curriculum, and hiring additional school-based social workers. So other potential areas for improvement included parent engagement and class sizes, both of which are viewed as weaknesses of the district and influential in school choice decisions for certain families. We recommend that the district encourage schools to increase opportunities for parent and community engagement, especially at secondary schools. So nearly half of families identify the level of parent involvement and outreach as a factor in their decision to enroll in their current school. Focus group participants also perceive private and charter schools as having higher levels of parent involvement, better communication, and more personal relationships with families. Parent involvement is viewed as higher at KCPS elementary schools compared to secondary schools when looking within the district. In terms of solutions, focus group participants recommend that KCPS focus on strategies for engaging parents who work during the day, establish parent-teacher organizations at all schools, and showcase parent involvement when parents tour schools. As this figure shows, parent community engagement was the second most commonly selected area for attracting and retaining families, followed by behavioral programming and supports in the staff survey. Notably, staff respondents, at least somewhat familiar with local charter schools, identify the level of parent involvement and outreach as a primary weakness of KCPS in comparison with the local charters, closely followed by class size as a weakness in comparison. So continuing to the second bullet, set of bullets here, related to class size, we accordingly recommend the district consider the feasibility of lowering class size at KCPS schools, particularly at those that struggle with recruitment and retention of students. Smaller-than-average class size may be a marketable factor for respective parents, as about a third of families lists class size as a factor in their decision to enroll in their current school. Indeed, focus group participants perceive private and charter schools as having smaller class sizes and recommend reducing class size to improve overall student enrollment and retention. This figure shows on the screen of the parents who indicated that their enrollment decisions were affected by academic-related factors. The percentage of these parents identifying each factor as influential in their decisions, based on the enrollment status of their child. As you can see in the seventh row, non-KCPS parents, particularly parents of a future school-age child and parents of a child who left KCPS, place more emphasis on class sizes when making enrollment decisions than current KCPS parents. Returning to the earlier recommendation around improving classroom management, you can also see in the fourth row how parents of a child who left KCPS on the far right are more likely to place emphasis on this factor than parents of a current KCPS child in the two left-hand columns. In addition, parents of a future school-age child are even more likely than parents of a child who transferred out of KCPS to select this factor. Regarding parent perceptions of the district, the majority of parent respondents expressed somewhat or very positive perceptions of KCPS, although families generally have a more positive opinion of other school options in the area. Moreover, parents of a child not currently attending a KCPS school have significantly less positive perceptions of the district than current KCPS parents. Accordingly, we recommend that the district focus resources to support marketing and recruitment efforts at traditional neighborhood schools particularly. Focus group participants reported perception that signature schools at KCPS are viewed as having a stronger and improving reputation in comparison to traditional schools. Some stakeholders perceive signature schools as receiving more resources and support and as having more rigors, academic standards, in comparison to the neighborhood schools. Further, some parents of signature school students report that they would have chosen a charter school over their neighborhood school if they had not been accepted into a signature school. In addition, we recommend that the district develop marketing and recruitment strategies that highlight the value of KCPS to future parents, particularly in those considering charter school options in particular as well. So this slide displays the percentage of parents expressing somewhat or very positive perceptions towards local school options, broken out again by the enrollment status of their child. So you can see in the top row, the percentage of respondents in each group who have a somewhat or very positive opinion of KCPS. Future parents and parents of young children have the least positive perceptions of KCPS overall. In comparison, nearly twice as many parents of future school-age children have positive perceptions of Kansas City charter schools, suggesting that charter schools will continue to be a major competitor to the district for future students in the city. While this data point isn't on the slide, interestingly, minority parents are more likely to have positive perceptions of KCPS than white, non-Hispanic parents in general. Focus group participants highlight KCPS's greater diversity, variety of extracurricular options, before-and-after-school care, and services for students with special needs as benefits over other school options, including charter and private schools. Perceived challenges and negative aspects of the district highlighted by focus group participants include teacher turnover, negative student behavior in classroom management, attendance challenges, accreditation challenges, lack of academic support and rigor, segregation and redlining effects, inconsistencies and variation within and across schools, and a constant sense of change. Related to perceptions of KCPS, focus group participants recognize that the district is working to overcome challenges and negative coverage in the local press. As one parent commented, in the news, it comes out when they, i.e. the district, does something wrong. But when they do something right, you never know. Responding to this perception, we recommend the district develop a marketing and public relations campaign that showcases positive initiatives and aspects throughout KCPS signature and neighborhood schools to balance negative media and improve public perceptions. As noted, stakeholders are aware of the district's challenges with accreditation, staff retention, behavior, and the others we discussed. Further, they emphasize that KCPS is represented negatively by the media, biasing public opinion and perception of its schools. and perception of its schools. As we also saw, parents of a child currently enrolled in KCBS have more positive perceptions of the district than other parents and community members, suggesting that these stakeholders may be more aware of the system's successes and benefits. Parents of a child who left KCBS, however, have the most positive perceptions of local charter schools. In terms of solutions, focus group participants recommend recruiting student and alumni volunteers to act as advocates for their schools to the public. So the following themes arose across focus groups and represent both barriers that inhibit parents from enrolling or keeping their child in KCBS, as well as areas that KCBS can address to improve student recruitment and retention in schools. In terms of school climate, safety, and violence, participants would like KCBS to improve classroom management and discipline practices, offer a comprehensive social-emotional learning curriculum, and ensure parents feel safe and welcome when they visit schools. For communication, relationship-building, and bilingual communication, participants would like KCBS to establish consistent two-way communication at both the district and school levels and ensure that communications and enrollment information translated into Spanish and other languages are accurately translated and accessible to parents who do not speak English. Regarding meeting students' academic needs, participants would like to see more personalization and higher academic expectations and rigor at all KCBS schools, as well as better diagnosis of students who would benefit from more advanced instruction and services. For family engagement and involvement in schools, participants recommend that KCBS focus on strategies for engaging parents who work during the day, as noted, establish parent-teacher organizations across schools, showcase the parent involvement when parents tour schools, and increase the parents' engagement at secondary schools specifically. In terms of staff retention, as noted, participants suggest that the district focus on retaining and recruiting high-quality teachers, investigate why teachers were leaving, and just continue placing first-year teachers in high-need schools and classrooms as possible. Our final overall finding is that the parents identify, is that parents identify the district's enrollment process as a potential barrier to overcoming negative perceptions of KCBS schools and improving recruitment and retention. Focus group participants report that parents find the enrollment process challenging and often lack sufficient information on the steps required. Recommended improvements related to the enrollment process include providing more information about school choice options and deadlines to all parents early in the year, conducting quality and accuracy tests on enrollment materials in other languages, improving KCBS's online enrollment system, and providing additional targeted guidance to families and students transitioning between schools, for example, from elementary to middle or middle to high school. We also recommend the district work to ensure that schools offer welcoming and informative tours for prospective families. While parents rely primarily on word-of-mouth and recommendations from friends, neighbors, and social media, they also place significant importance on their school visit experiences in their enrollment decisions. Focus group participants, especially those who send their children to non-KCBS schools, report that school visits are very impactful and that they often choose a school based on its feel during the tour. Turning to our last slide here, parents describe having trouble finding information about enrollment in KCBS schools and describe a lack of communication from the district and individual schools regarding enrollment, again, particularly around the middle and high school transitions and related deadlines. So that wraps up the main findings and recommendations that I wanted to review with the group. I'd now like to open up to any questions that you all may have and a discussion.
So I'm going to go ahead and board to questions, and I'd like to first invite Rita and Mr. Wassersstrom if you have questions, because I know you are on a relatively short timeline.
Mark, you want to go first?
Is he on mute?
I'll go ahead then. So thank you for the summary of your information. I have a couple of, I have a lot of questions, but I'm going to limit to a few and then hope that we get some more data and are able to dig into this discussion in a more meaningful way. First of all, talk to, talk to us a little bit about the, I don't see included in here any demographic or grade-related demographics about the survey respondents. Is that data that you have that we could use to understand whether some of these responses are more particular to high school or middle school or elementary school cohorts?
Yep, so in the full report, we have data broken down by more demographics, including grade level. Some of that information is also available through an interactive dashboard that allows for segmentation of the results. In terms of the representative-ness of the sample for the family enrollment survey, on Slide 25, we have a breakdown of the percentage of respondents living within district-bound group percentage, with a Hispanic or Latino child, a non-white child, and a household income below X amount. So there is that information overall, as well as the ability to dive deeper into the data.
Is it reasonable to assume, I guess this question is directed to Dr. Padell and Ms. Mancer, is it reasonable to assume that we will see the full report?
Yes, I believe that, is this, there's additional data, you're saying, beyond this fairly thick document that we received, there is additional data that's available? Is that, is that the explanation?
The full report was sent out to the board on Friday, and it's about 100 pages, which does dive into more detail based off of who responded, like what type of, you know, if it's, you know, which parent group or background. So there's that, but then we do have the ability to dive in even deeper. But I kept challenging Garrett to put more information into that final report, but we wanted it to also still be digestible. But we have the ability to kind of dive in ourselves if there's particular things that people have questions on.
So in the short, if it's not in there, Ms. Cortez, yes, I mean, whatever, whatever we have from that report is available for the board and to review, absolutely.
It maybe starts on Slide or Page 52.
Yeah, I mean, I've been through the full report, but just trying to tie back some of that information. So the second, the second question I have in terms of staff participation, based on your experience across the country, did, in terms of the total participation relative to the size of our staff, is that kind of typical? Is that above average, below average? Kind of what's your expectation in terms of response rate?
Sure, and frankly, that varies a lot based on the district and how they push out the survey, as well as the focus of the survey. In some cases, with districts larger than Kansas City, we have over 50% of staff responding to, say, an end-of-year climate survey or a more evaluative survey. With a survey like this where it wasn't directly tied to, say, school climates or focused on some sort of evaluation, I think we were hoping to have a greater response, but this wasn't out of line with what we've seen in other districts.
Is that also true with regard to the distribution between elementary and secondary response?
So the, the greater response among the elementary staff is not a trend that we consistently see, so that, I wouldn't say reflects kind of our standard survey response.
I'm going to have to follow up with my other questions, I think, by, by email to kind of take some of the conclusions and see in relative, you know, ask them in, sorry, a little bit more detailed way.
Garrett, Garrett, I was interested in reading your report in conjunction with Mike Reynolds' report, who had about the same size of a survey. He was our in-house expert on long-range planning and surveying. And the thing that concerned me most that was highlighted in Mike Reynolds' report was that about half of the middle school kids were not interested in what they were being taught, and about half didn't think they were doing the best job they can do. And at the same time, 2/3 of the middle school kids thought that bullying was a big problem. Was, was those findings addressed by your survey when you were surveying the students in the Kansas City public schools? And if so, did your survey argue with or contradict or to confirm what Mike Reynolds found in his survey?
That's a good question. So our, in our work, we were, we didn't survey students directly, but gathered that information through parents around their enrollment decisions. And certainly, the, the finding around the importance of, or the influence of behavioral management in enrollment decisions was something that stood out and tended to be more influential among younger, parents of younger students, so in middle school and in elementary school than in high school. So in that regard, I would say it aligns to some extent with what, with Mike found in his report. The other, I think, major trend in terms of engagement and discipline was between signature and non-signature schools, with particularly in the focus groups, people, parents coming back to the, the theme that signature schools are providing a higher-quality education in their mind with less kind of disciplinary issues in comparison with the neighborhood schools and with the charter schools.
So Garrett, I'm sort of a little bit of a related question to Mr. Wassersstrom's question. How did we develop the list of stakeholders? I was kind of surprised to not see any non-KCBS parents at all, so those who were a current or future or past, well, maybe potentially a past parent, but so other stakeholders, think about your, you know, 65-year-old person who doesn't have kids in the school any longer and has no plans to have any kids either.
So we didn't focus in the, the presentation on that group particularly, but there were the community members that were included in the survey and answered a more limited set of questions because they didn't have a child and couldn't speak to that enrollment kind of process. But as one of the segmentations or groups within the enrollment segmentation, there's the community member group. So we had about, let's see, 264, so 11% of the, the family enrollment survey sample were community members who didn't have a child but were kind of living in the area and providing feedback generally around the school systems.
Gotcha. So on, on those then where you did ask a question, we'll find the results within the report for those questions for community members?
Exactly.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Garrett, also, can you just share kind of the number of non-KCBS parents? So, so parents whose children are attending a school other than KCBS? Can you just give them the numbers on that as well?
Yeah, so in the breakdown by enrollment status, we had about 11% community members, so no child or not planning to have a child. And then in terms of current KCBS parents, that was about 45% of the sample. About 8% were future parents, so a child's not yet enrolled in pre-K. And then the, the non-KCBS parents, so a parent with a child currently enrolled or recently graduated from a non-KCBS school, that was about a little over 35%.
And I did want to clarify something for Mr. Wassersstrom. My understanding that the report Mike did was a stakeholder survey that would have covered and retrieved input from students, faculty, and staff and parents, and it's something that we annually do in alignment with our scorecard. This particular report was focused more around the decisions and the perceptions that people are having around choosing our schools. So it helps us to ultimately take the findings and make some decisions around what does our school programming look like, what adjustments do we need to make, what do we do to be more competitive, and what are people seeing around how our, you know, the academic program, the safety, the perception, those kind of things is what this study focused on more.
And Mr. Brand, I just want to thank you for this presentation. It's a lot of information. I just have a question about how we might parse out, or if your analysis attempted to do so already.
We're finishing up pretty soon.
How do we parse out, is it possible to parse out perception versus or something? Because I think about, as a parent, walking into a school, choosing a school for my boys, other than the great city school or the great schools score that you can find online, I had no, no idea or no indications of academic rigor. I had no indications of how many fights that school had had. I had no indication of the quality of teachers even. And so what I had to go by was my first impression with the principal and how she greeted my husband and myself and how she walked us through her program. And so I'm wondering what really goes into someone's decision around their perception of the safety of a school? I mean, like assuming a fight doesn't break out as soon as you walk in the door and you can see it. I'm just really wondering how, if you, from your perspective, what are people really perceiving versus assuming?
Yeah, I think that's an important question, and that's really what came out in the focus groups, which can dive into the kind of perceptions in more depth than a survey. And I would say the main, it seems like where those perceptions are coming from are really driven by word-of-mouth, so community connections with neighbors, with friends, with others, as well as social media connections, but really those kind of one-to-one interactions and the reputation that builds around schools. I don't think we had, there may have been a comment or two noting that during a school visit, there was actually kind of a fight breaking out, but that wasn't the predominant theme.
Dr. Jones, to jump in here too, I really think that this perception piece, and as you saw in the recommendations, we can really hit this stuff head-on. This report is very insightful in how the marketing and communications team specifically can evolve and, you know, take some of those recommendations. And frankly, the opportunity I think we have is a challenge and is exciting for, for me personally and for our team, and I think we're talking about what we need to hit head-on.
Can I ask a few questions?
Yes, go ahead, Jennifer.
Thank you first for the report, Garrett and Megan. I, I read it from cover to cover. I'm going to read it a thousand times more. I've been waiting for this for many, many years. I am also going to ask for the interactive dashboard, because that, I think, is going to answer a lot of the questions that I have around this. You mentioned the word segmentation, and to me, that is really where the meat of this is, is understanding those segments and their perceptions, because I don't think they all align. And so it kind of goes to, I think, Dr. Jones' point as well. So I'm, I'm going to just ask a couple of general things. I don't need answers, but I just want to make sure I'm kind of honing in on the right area. What was interesting to me is the focus, both on parents and students, like versus staff, on quality of ed, and then characteristics of my child's school. And then they flipped in the staff portion, I believe, of the survey, but they were both the top two. And so to me, that's interesting. And to Dr. Jones' point, when I saw quality of my child's education, and they're talking about curricula, and they're talking about rigor, and they're talking about the quality of my teacher, I'm like, so in the focus group, I hope you probe to say, okay, those are important to you, how do you evaluate those? You know, because there is word-of-mouth, as you said, like perception, but then there's also other things, and we need to tease those out so that Kelly and her team know where to focus on fixing perceptions. So, because there is such a thing as education redlining going on right now with great schools and Zillow, and we need to know about these sorts of things so we can address it. There was also, you know, there is, hold on. So I don't really need an answer to that, other than I think the answer may be, I don't know if you have any output from the focus groups more than what you, I know you peppered your... more than what you, I know you peppered your, you know, I love that part of the report where I could read some detail about what people were actually saying, but I don't know if you have that raw part out of the focus groups because I do think that would be interesting to see how you guys probed and where people went. I would say, Garrett, one question. Did whoever handled the focus groups, did they probe on that idea of quality of ed? And what do you, how do you measure that? What are the tools and resources you use as a parent to measure that?
Yeah, I think, I haven't read the transcripts thoroughly for a few weeks, but I think that came up primarily in the discussion of, I guess, the general discussion of how are you making these enrollment decisions and what information sources are you taking into account? So I know several, or parents across groups mentioned kind of websites that rank schools and provide informations on assessment and that type of benchmarking. So that was one source. Word of mouth about schools that a child, a parent's child doesn't currently attend was certainly the theme that parents kept coming back to. And then for parents of a child currently enrolled at a KCPS school, obviously, that child's experience was informing the parents of the child's decision, certainly.
I think one of the last things I'll just kind of mention as an overview thing is that I recognized as I was reading some of, especially when it came to characteristics, when it was related to behavior, class size, and there was one other supports maybe, and one other. I wrote this note. I said, we've created a system where the most involved parents with the easier to educate students select out of certain schools, you know, and I wonder if that's what this report is essentially showing us in raw data, which is our signature schools and charter schools where parents who are very highly involved self-select and then they take their students and they make sure those students behave and they make sure those students do their homework, which, okay, then reflects itself in a test score, which is just like this whole circle. And how do we use this data to then start to undo that equation? Because I know for a fact, and I know many of my other board colleagues have observed, and I know the cabinet has too, that our neighborhood schools, I am a parent of two children that have been to signature schools, so I know firsthand. But our neighborhood schools are as good as, if not, I might say, a little bit because they are dealing with some of those families that have more challenges and more students that have more challenges. So I really appreciate your work.
I want to just jump in for a second, folks, because we're down to 6:29. And I think one of the things that is really important here is that there's a lot of rich material. We, as seven board members and with the administration, are going to need a lot of additional time to dig in, to kind of pull our sleeves up and walk through what we're seeing at this time and to understand it. And also to have the opportunity, I'm very interested personally in hearing from Shannon Jacks and the administration and Jerome Williams and others about, and Kelly Waichel, about what rose to the top for you. And to my colleague, Ms. Wolfsey's point, what might be the implications or what is behind that that we're not recognizing? So I appreciate Jennifer Wolfsey's questions. I think some of those are very important as we understand how to use the data. At this point in time, we are at the conclusion of our executive session. And so what I am proposing so that we can move forward in concluding this meeting and reconvening for our monitoring meeting this evening, that we add substantial time to the next board schedule for this kind of discussion. And the officers can follow up with Dr. Bedell about how we can incorporate that conversation into the next meeting so that all board members have a chance to participate. Mr. Thornton, the chief legal counsel informs me that we are able to set aside the superintendent closed item for this evening, that it is not necessary to take action on that item this evening so that we will be able to complete, we will set that aside to the next meeting. There are, will be a couple of items on Board Chair Open, but they are nothing that requires time at this moment, but there are items that I can email to my colleagues. Are there any additional requests from my colleagues before we adjourn this meeting?
Madam Chair, just a quick bio break in between sessions, please.
Yes, I can endorse that.
Can I say this, Madam Chair? Well, because I do feel like we need, we definitely need more time. There's a lot of stuff in this, in this survey that we really need to delve into. So I'm very interested in, because I want to have more discussion. And we can definitely work that out and have to get back with Hanover. Hanover, I could tell you now, we'll probably need you back again. But there's a lot of really critical things in this, in this report that we need to go deeper into.
Yes. Thank you so much for coming and being part of the presentation tonight to our Hanover team. And we apologize for bringing you in so late into the evening's discussion. There's a lot happening here in Kansas City like there is all over the country. So with this, I would accept a motion to adjourn this meeting. And then I would like to give everyone until 6:40 to return for the next meeting.
So move.
Is there a second?
Seconded, sorry.
All comfortable with this? Please just say aye for me.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We will conclude. I have a question for June. Will we remain just on this line or do you want us to dial back in?
You'll need to dial back in on the general session line. Let me guess exactly what that is because it is a different code for teams.
All right. Thank you for that reminder. So everyone, 6:40, please dial back in. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to ask the secretary, can she let me know if I have everyone here?
You have everyone except Marvia Jones. Oh, here she is. She just joined. So everyone is here that is attending.
All right. Fantastic. Good evening, everyone who's joining us tonight. Welcome to the April 8, 2020 Policy Monitoring Workshop. We're very pleased to have you this evening. There is no gavel for me to pound. And so we call this meeting to order. The first item is the roll call. So if the secretary will please call the roll.
Ms. Manser?
Here.
Mr. Abarka?
Present.
Ms. Cortez?
Mr. Hogan?
Here.
Dr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Ms. Wolfsey?
Here.
Thank you. It would now be in order to receive a motion to approve the absence of Ms. Cortez and Mr. Wasserstrom for this meeting.
So move.
Seconded.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. The secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is approval of the agenda for this evening. Are there any proposed changes to this agenda? If not, it would be in order to receive a motion to approve.
So move.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote. The secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Thank you. The first item on this agenda is the workshop presentation. The board chair recognizes Superintendent Mark Bedell.
Let me unmute. Okay, I'm sorry. Madam Chair, thank you. I am ready to get to our presentation, Board Policy 1.3 Engage in Improvement of Community. We have an update on athletics and an update from our Student Supports Division. At this time, I will pass over our first report to, I think it's, let me make sure I'm looking at the right thing here. All right, Dr. Sanders. So we're ready for you to conduct your report.
Okay, good evening. And let me get it up here.
Looking snazzy there, Dr. Sanders.
As always.
That's, hold on, folks, that's not my, geez.
Hold on. Is this, this is, oh, did I skip something here?
I think, I think so. I thought we were going to start with the...
Still a biliteracy. I think I just...
Biliteracy was removed earlier.
That's what I thought. Okay, so why is that still on the presentation? Because I thought we had removed that. So we should be going right into our athletics presentation.
You have that on your system and you are going to share it from your computer, Mr. Dr. Sanders. There it is.
All right, here we go. Dr. Sanders, are you, you're muted now, Dr. Sanders.
I'm sorry.
You're muted again, Dr. Sanders.
Okay. I'm sorry, folks. What is going on? Dr. Bedell is crazy. I can't, my presentation is not coming up.
Hey, John. Oh, is there any way you can control the presentation from yours or June?
Yeah, June, do you have it? I don't have a copy of it.
I'm seeing if I have a copy of it here. One moment.
And Dr. Sanders, if you want to send me a copy, I can display it for you.
We did a dry run with this this morning, so I don't know what changed here.
I have no idea because it's not, it's not showing of what I had.
All right. Do we, while you're working on that, Dr. Woodley, do you want to, do you want to move with your presentation? And we'll just, Madam Chair, if it's okay, could we just swap the order?
Please feel free to proceed. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. So we'll move over to Dr. Woodley, who has our Student Support Services. And if you all could work with Dr. Sanders. Dr. Sanders is okay. This is your first time, so we'll get through this. Dr. Woodley looked like she's ready, so we'll go with that presentation on our Student Support Services. And Dr. Woodley, you have to unmute.
Good afternoon, Dr. Bedell. Are you guys able to see the presentation okay?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. So it is a great pleasure to be able to present to you guys about the great things we have going on in the Department of Student Support Services. I wanted to have an opportunity to have a, to give you an overview of what changes we've made in the Department of Student Support Services. This year, we've kind of moved some additional departments into the Department of Student Support Services. So wanted to kind of give you an overview of what the department entails. So we currently support all of the school counselors in all of the schools in Kansas City, all of the clinicians, we call them trauma-sensitive clinicians and social workers that work with the schools, the Office of School Discipline, the Office of Nursing, the Office of Security, the alternative schools in our district, the Office of Ambusment, and the Plaza Program that we support our Hispanic students with. We support all three levels of the tier intervention model for socially-emotional support. This is new and a different approach that we took this year. In the past, we really focused on tier two and tier three interventions. But based on our comprehensive school reviews, we found that we really need to focus on all tiers, really tier one, really focusing on culture and climate in the buildings as well as the additional levels of support when the tier one interventions are not working. So really working with the schools to establish those tier one supports and then actually working with them throughout all the tiers to make sure that all students are getting the support that is needed. This year, we have really made a strong focus on our trauma-informed schools model and focused on identifying and assessing traumatic stress, addressing and treating traumatic stress in our students as well as our staff, and really focused on the teaching of trauma education and trauma awareness. As you guys know, the VocA grant really focused on trying to make sure we were meeting the needs of our students that have been exposed to violence. And so we've done a deep dive of really trying to get this information out and do a district-wide model of intervention to really become a model trauma-informed school district. So these are the elements. As you can see, you can kind of read through them. And then highlighted are the areas in which we've really tried to focus in on. And really right now with the state that we're in now with these uncertain times with the COVID-19, a lot of work has been really focused on crisis response and emergency management over the last few weeks. Collaborating for Collective Impact, of course, the schools can't do it alone. And so we have really worked with the community to try to develop organizations that can come alongside of us and assist us in doing this work. So we have developed a three-year model to roll out trauma-informed practices within our school districts, focusing on the whole child. And we have partnered with these organizations to provide technical assistance and additional professional development to make sure we're reaching every, every part of our ecosystem and addressing every stakeholder's needs. So we have partnered with the Center for Conflict Resolution. And in that partnership, we are providing professional development for all of our staff. That is an ongoing partnership for three years with multiple professional development opportunities to make sure that we are able to meet, every teacher in our district will be able to attend a two-year discipline that restores training and that provides training on basically how to identify trauma with students, how to build better relationships, understanding historical trauma, and then understanding the whole discipline process and what an appropriate response should be when working with students that come from diverse situations and that need additional supports as well. In addition to all of our instructional staff going through a two-day discipline that restores training, all of our support staff, our counselors, our administrators, they go through a four-day training, learning about restorative practices, learning about historical trauma, learning about how to really build better relationships, learning how to really focus on our culture and climate, building culture and climate foundations in schools and things of that nature. So now we go to the students.
Unknown participant is now joining.
The students actually attend a training, understanding their own trauma, understand how to build better relationships with each other and how to build better relationships with adults. So we have, we've made sure that everyone within our ecosystem is being trained. So we have, we've made sure that everyone within our ecosystem is being trained on these, um, on these tenets of trauma and how to better, build better relationships and how to really and truly, um, create a, uh, a systemic approach to having great culture and climate, um, for our students. Our next level of intervention is really focused on the community and educating the community and the families about trauma and what it is and how they can best support us and making sure that our students are well. Alive and Wel, Alive and Well Communities Training, they, uh, this is the organization that, um, wrote the tenet for the Model Trauma-Informed Practices for the state of Missouri and gets to utilize their framework when we're talking about what a model trauma-informed school district should look like. And we are using them to be our technical assistance, um, trainers. They provide technical assistance for my team to make sure that we have the foundation. And we're creating a train-to-trainer kind of model so that when the Voca Grant is over, that we're still able to kind of continue this work and not, um, need to kind of have these, um, organizations to be, um, helping us support the work that we're able to kind of, um, take the baton and kind of continue the work moving forward. Um, Children's Mercy is working with us on, um, implementing a lot of programming around family education. Um, the wonderful, they have a wonderful program called Prepped and Ready. And this program really focuses on gun violence and having, um, training, um, our parents on, um, you know, understanding gun violence and what they can do to kind of help prevent gun violence as well as suicide prevention. What we're seeing in our schools is we're seeing a high incidence of students with major, um, depression and suicidology as early as the fourth and fifth grade. And so this program really kind of educates parents on what to look for and what, how to support their students through these, um, through these transitions of, um, issues with, um, mental illness or, um, major life transitions as well. Um, we're looking at also look, um, rolling out a bullying campaign, a red cart campaign with them to really focus on trying to make sure that our students understand how to build better relationships with each other, um, within the schools, within the school walls. Our last, um, organization that we're partnering with, um, is Diversity Telehealth. And I'm so excited about this partnership because, uh, with the COVID-19 pandemic, we found ourselves in a position where we needed to pivot. And we had to find out how can we best support our students and our families. And with that, we were able to develop this partnership. And we had been in conversations with Diversity Telehealth about some opportunities prior to the, um, and prior to the pandemic, but we, we, we had moved forward with our partnership. And so through the, um, wonderful partnership, not only with Diversity Telehealth, but with JCCSF providing us with some emergency funding, we'll be rolling out tele, our telehealth platform so we can, um, have a, a different level of support for our families and our, and our students. Wanted to kind of really, um, break down the changes that have been made over the last three years. So as you can see, in 2017, 2018, we had six clinicians for 35 buildings. And now we're up to 18 clinicians for 35 buildings. And yes, all of our clinician positions have been filled. And we have hit the ground running. And I have an amazing team that's been very innovative and, um, focused on how we can be, um, look at the DNA of our communities and how we could best support our communities through these times. So I'm very excited about that. Um, wanted to talk to you about the interventions that's been provided by our student support team. So our focus is the whole child. We're trying to make sure that students are healthy, safe, engaged, supported, and challenged. And with that, what we're looking at is the fact that in last year, the data shows that from October, um, 2018 to March 2019, we supported, um, 1,419 families. To date, um, we, from August 2019 to March, um, the end of March to date, we have supported 13,121, um, incidents that we've supported our families. So we can see because of the increased supports, we've been able to have a, a deeper level of impact within our schools. And so we're excited about the work that our team has been able to do with this. Becoming a Model and Trauma School Districts, we are hitting the ground running with this work. This, the Voca Grant gave us the, um, the funding necessary to move the agenda forward. We have 13, um, 13 schools that started with our first cohort. These 13 schools, um, attended a trauma-informed school conference in Atlanta. Um, they were able to break, bring a school team. And the school team will, will be able to kind of set the foundation for the work that we're doing. We're not trying, we understand that we can't go at this work at a, at a one-size-fits-all model. We've got to look at the DNA of each school and provide a framework of how to support each schools through this work. And so, um, we'll be able to continue this work, um, this summer through our Teacher Institute, um, during that time to be able to provide additional levels of support and developing a, um, strategic plan for each individual school. So far, um, our, our, these schools have been trained on the foundations and the awareness of trauma. And they have conducted, conducted their school trauma assessments. And so we're ready to kind of move forward with that. Personalized learning for teachers. We, um, wanted to make sure not only focusing on our first 13 schools that were focusing on our cohort, but make sure that we're providing professional development across all schools, within Kansas City public schools. And so, you know, we have, uh, rolled out our professional development catalog where we actually go into schools, provide professional development during, um, the professional development time. We work with individual principals to provide one-on-one support for teachers. And then we have district-level trainings on different topics. Um, one of the things that I do want to highlight is our understanding the cycle of poverty, um, training we're supposed, we were supposed to do in the month of March. We haven't had an opportunity to do so. But my team had an opportunity to be trained on, um, implementing the poverty simulation. So we will be able to do poverty simulations across, um, the community as well as internal and external stakeholders to kind of really understand how poverty impacts our ability to really support, um, support students and families. Um, our BAG system, our PD and your PJs, as we call it, um, work. I kind of introduced that, um, a little early on. That work is moving forward. We have a few hundred teachers that are signed up to, um, do the virtual professional development. Um, we have, based on our ability to, um, support them in this work with the change, um, because of COVID-19, a lot of our, a lot of our teachers have not been able to complete the work because it, it involves us going in and seeing them putting the things that they're learning into practice. But we have teachers that are enrolled and are working to complete the, um, the program. Our COVID-19 response, um, protocol. So, um, like I said earlier, we really had to look at a different way of doing things and how do we support students and families during this crisis. And so our protocol, what we've done is we, um, started out by, um, conducting wellness check-ins. Our school counselors, um, have roster of all the students within their schools. And so they began to work with the teachers and administrators and develop a protocol for contacting all of our students and trying to identify what the needs were, um, and then referring them over to our clinicians to provide a different level, additional level of support. We, um, so far, um, I just received some preliminary data. We're still going to be meeting with our secondary principals tomorrow to get more in-depth information. But so far, we've gotten information that, um, out of the schools that we have been able to get our data from, we're missing, um, contact with about 1,500 students that we have not been able to contact. So we're working on a, a protocol and a plan to really find out what are our next levels of interventions to be able to go out and try to find out, um, where those students are and really try to get them connected to the work that we're trying to do. We developed a comprehensive list of community resources. Um, one thing, we have really been trying to be unique in our approach to find out what our families need. And so we've been doing no-contact deliveries with our families, um, that needed, um, not only food, but maybe, um, toiletries and resources of, um, like that. We've been able to make no-contact deliveries to be able to try to meet their needs. We have developed a comprehensive, comprehensive list of community resources to make sure that what programs are still available that could still support our families and make sure we're funneling that information out to, uh, our families that need the additional level of support. We've collaborated internally with all of our departments, trying to figure out how we can best work as a team and collective and be, you know, really focusing on that collective impact. We've worked with the Department of Human Resources and kind of really pushed out our information about our EAP services for our, our, our team members that need some additional counseling supports. We've worked with our, um, parent and community, um, face team to kind of talk about how we really get information out to parents, been in deep connections with our Office of Communications, our Office of Students in Transition, ELL Department, collaborating with all those departments to make sure we're able to meet the needs of our families, uh, with fidelity. Um, and, uh, my team has been undergoing the last couple of weeks this training on telehealth service delivery. So when we're able to roll that model out, they have received ethics training and getting the certifications necessary for them to be able to roll out this work. I am also very excited about the caring for colleagues. We understand that in addition to our students and families that need support, this is a unique time and stressful time. And some, and, and some of our staff members are, you know, having anxiety and, and things of that nature about the, you know, what's going on right now. And, you know, so we have been really focused on trying to provide our, uh, care for our colleagues and pushing a self-care initiative. Um, with that, we have, um, yoga on Tuesdays and Thursdays with Ava Santiago. Um, and that's our coordinator that focuses on Plaza Program. We have Mindful Mondays, which is a partnership we have with Alive and Well to focus on mindful techniques. On, um, on Wednesdays, we have our teacher or our, our team Circle of, Circle of Support, um, program with, um, Center for Conflict Resolutions. And on Fridays, we have Box Out with one of our school counselors, Richie Cherry, to kind of help deal with some of the stress levels. So we have a lot of great things going on with our, um, within our departments and, um, would love to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Woodley. I really appreciate that, um, presentation. That was a lot. I know that my colleagues will have questions. If, if it's all right, I'm going to toss out, um, a couple of questions just to get it started. Uh, when you talk about the, um, ethics training for the telehealth services, um, and also just being able to roll out telehealth services, are we, at this point in time, when we're providing telemental health, is that a reimbursable service? Are we able to get reimbursement from the state, uh, through the Department of Health or Mental Health for that?
Uh, not at this time, but it will be moving forward once we're able to kind of set some things in place. Um, like I, like I said earlier, we were in the process of having conversations about rolling out telehealth as an op- option for the school district prior to this. And we were working with the state on our, our clinicians, because they are licensed clinicians, actually becoming certified to be able to provide those services for reimbursement. But at this time, we have not, um, completed the necessary, um, action items with the state in order to be a reimbursable, um, program.
And my second question, um, related to the hotline, is this a publicly available hotline that's both available to students, their parents, and then, as you said, staff? And where would a person find the number for that hotline?
So what we have done is the, um, the Communications Department has a, um, has uploaded the actual numbers. And what we did was we have each, um, school has a number because we, we didn't want parents to be calling in, um, to a hotline and then being put on hold and things of that nature. So we have, um, divided up our clinicians', um, supports by school. So each school has a number to call in to get direct services for a clinician.
So given that we are not physically in school right now, would that number be located on the school website? Or how would I find that number if I am a parent?
Well, a couple of things. Number one, that number should be on the district website, on our, under COVID, our COVID-19 resources. Additionally, I had an opportunity to, um, do a couple of interviews with a couple of newspapers. And we published, we gave that information to the newspapers to be published, um, as well so that we can try to get the word out about how to contact us. We are working closely with the Communications Department to come up with different avenues to be able to get the word out about, um, how, uh, parents can contact us directly to get support, the support that's necessary.
Thank you. And now I will, um, open it up for any colleagues with questions.
Yes, uh, I'll go ahead. Uh, thank you again, Dr. Woodley, for this presentation. Um, I have a question just about, I guess I'll start with a comment, please bear with me, or just a, let's, um, one of the things, uh, that I've experienced with a child in our school district, um, is that sometimes, uh, small things will occur. So like, what if a young kid writes on a desk, or they do something like that? Um, and then they go through a disciplinary process? Um, what I've, something I've been thinking about is how we might go in for incorporate more of the restorative justice practices into just everyday teaching. So I know we have the resource at Southeast. And I know you guys have been sort of, um, tossing around the idea of how that gets expanded at some point. Um, but what I'm more so concerned is about is, um, getting teachers to the point that they understand sort of reflexively, hey, a kid did this, now I engage them in the cleanup process. Is, maybe they missed a piece of their recess as they're helping remediate whatever they did. Um, I have found myself in, in work with other parents, you know, kind of finding resources otherwise and kind of suggesting, hey, can my kid help out as part of their restorative practice? Um, can they do this? And I'm finding that a lot of, um, teachers for them, this is not, and even, maybe even some of our principals, this is not first nature for them. And I know restorative justice is not a, I mean, it's an old concept, but not necessarily in a school context. And so I'm just wondering if you can say more about, um, what your future plans might be for incorporating restorative justice in just the generic way that, um, we, we, uh, train teachers and just incorporate that in classrooms?
Yes, ma'am, Dr. Jones. That's exactly our approach, and that's what we're doing, like I said, over the,
Oh, we can hear you.
I thought Dr. Jones was still speaking. So, yeah, exactly.
So she's listening.
Okay. So that's exactly what we're doing. That's our approach. That's the discipline that restores training that all of our teachers will go through, having that understanding as well as our administrators and our support staff, so that we look at doing discipline differently. Um, right now, we were, um, right before, uh, our break, we were actually looking at our, our code of conduct and try to identify what we're doing with our code of conduct and how we could best, even at a district level, once a child is referred to the district level for, um, chronic misconduct and things of that nature, how could we implement a restorative model where students are engaged in, um, finding out what do we need to do to implement those, um, replacement behaviors? So we are definitely, um, looking at that and coming up with how we're going to roll the restorative practice out across the district, understanding that we have a three-year plan. Like I said, we start with our first 13 schools. And those are the schools that we're starting with are the schools that we see the highest need for support, um, the highest number of, um, discipline referrals and things of that nature. So I think that we're going to be very well pleased with the work. We're already seeing our discipline numbers going down with the trainings that we've been able to provide at a district level. But once we get more teachers trained through the discipline that restores training and then our interventions, um, being pushed into the school district, I think we're going to be able to see a different way of doing things. Additionally, like I also mentioned, really working with parents on understanding trauma and the whole child and our children and our will, and how we can best support families to be able to kind of identify, okay, what's going on? You know, you know, what, you know, what's going on? What, what, you know, why are we having these types of behaviors within the school? And how we can best come together as a community to resolve these problems? So, um, I believe you're going to be very pleased with the work that we're doing, um, with rolling this out.
Dr. Woodley, uh, this is Nate Hogan. Um, so one, Dr. Jones stole my thunder a little bit, but that's appropriate because this is her area of expertise, and I probably shouldn't even be allowed to ask questions here. But nonetheless, I'm going to. Um, so one, thank you to you and your team for the incredible work you guys do. I mean, it's so mission critical, right, for our kids and their families. Um, and so thank you, um, to all of you guys that, And so thank you to all of you guys that, that are doing this, this work. And it's a little bit of a piggyback question off of Dr. Jones' question. So Ms. Manser and I had an opportunity along with, I think it was the incoming and outgoing board chairs for MSBA to visit the program at Southeast and, and watch the kids sort of talk to us about how they go through their, their conflict resolution through the school. And I know you said you've got a three-year plan, but is that three-year plan, what does that look like in terms of rolling out that particular component of conflict resolution, where the kids are actually doing this work?
Okay, so for example, our next step in that program that you saw at Southeast, our next step is to roll that out at our two middle schools, so Central Middle and Northeast Middle. So we're looking, we have done comprehensive school walkthroughs at every building to kind of identify what schools are ready to implement, what type of support services and what is needed. And so what we don't want is, we want to make sure that the program has the data that's showing the effectiveness. And so we want to make sure we're intentional about implementing things with fidelity. So our next level of that implementation is at our two middle schools. That, that we're looking at doing that next year, and then we will continue on to, you know, look at, you know, what models and what is needed, because every school has its own DNA. And what works at Southeast is not going to work at another building. And so we've got to be intentional about what, you know, doing that comprehensive assessment and be able to identify that it may not be the exact model that you see there, but restorative practices, concepts will be rolled out across the district.
And that's across the district in three years then? Or it could be longer?
Yeah, we're looking at a three-year model. Some of our schools are already doing similar, some similar work, especially our elementary schools. So we're looking at, you know, the different things that are currently, are currently doing. And our thing is if it's working, we don't want to change it. But if it's not working, we want to make sure we're implementing things that do work.
Understood. Thank you.
Additional questions from my colleagues? Dr. Woodley, I would like to ask you just a couple of other questions. I know that there's incredible traumas, you talked about, related to COVID-19. And so what is the primary mechanism that you push out information to our KCPS employees? I know you talked about the different program components you're offering, and I'm totally curious about the box set. But, but what is the way in which you push out information in a, a very effective way with our staff so that they understand that the stress and trauma that they are experiencing is, is reasonable and understandable and, and that, that there is a support mechanism for them? I know that many of our staff are, are feeling nervous about maybe their own family members. We have young teachers in this school district that are living far away from their families. So they're living in apartments here and they don't have family nearby. So can you just say a little bit more about how you're connecting them?
Yes, so we have been working closely with our Office of Communications to kind of roll out the information that we have, that we're here, that we're supportive, and that we're, you know, we're trying to support our, our KCPS team. I can say it was the most powerful thing this morning, our Circle of Support, our, with Center for Conflict Resolutions. We didn't have a large number of staff members that participated this morning, but the ones that did, I think it was a powerful experience for them to kind of voice their concerns. They were able to voice how they were feeling, the anxiety that they were having, and being able to walk away with some additional supports, as well as our Mindfulness Mondays, same thing. We had team members coming on board, being able to, you know, really kind of really voice, you know, what's going on, what they have going on. Like, you know, a lot of our families are dealing with death, dealing with people that are ill, dealing with family members that are currently in the hospital, they can't go visit them. And so we're providing those, of those mechanisms. But our Communications Department is working, we're working closely together. We're looking at doing some more innovative things to kind of push information out, like via television, radio, different things of that nature, to make sure that everybody's getting the message that we're here for you and we want to support you. So more information to come, but we wanted to start now and make sure we kind of, you know, really start putting information and things in place. And, and so the feedback that I've gotten that everybody is, is appreciative of the resources that we have available to them and just getting, getting it to go deeper, so that more people take advantage of it.
To add to that, Ms. Manser, and to collaborate with Dr. Woodley there, as a communications team, yes, we're doing our Monday Weekly E-News. It's our staff-only communication where we've included some of these items that she's referencing about the boxing and the yoga and the, the conflict resolution items. So our uptick in staff communication opens on our email has increased, of course, during a time of crisis or a time of rapid needed information. People are really in tune internally to what we're offering. So we've seen an uptick in that and we'll continue to help her and support that department and that mission.
Are there additional questions from my colleagues for Dr. Woodley? All right, pausing a moment, hearing none. Then Dr. Bedell, I will turn it back to you for the second report.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Woodley. Dr. Sanders, I think we're ready to go. We fixed whatever the issues were. So we will pass it over to you so we can go over our athletic program and, and how we're keeping our students involved in, in the improvement of our community.
Thank you so much, Dr. Bedell. Joe, first off, will you be controlling the screen or should I be doing it? That's what I need to know.
I got you.
Okay. First off, you can see all the people, my associate A.D., Mrs. Meredith Doyle, and Mr. Tom Lewandowski is also on the phone with us today as well. Joe? Basically, ours is Pillar B, and it's how we get folks and organizations involved in our organization from sports and clubs and activities and things of that nature. So that's what we're here to talk a little bit about today. My father had a word that was always, when something was special, he said it was a humdinger. So tonight, we've got some special humdingers that I want to talk to you guys about in our sports. Next, please. First off, this gives you a rundown of the different fall, winter, and spring sports that we have currently for the high school and middle school. We were honored this year. In spring of, in the spring of, of 2019, we did a survey of what schools would be interested in softball. And from that initial survey, we found that Lincoln had already had a young lady in, requiring, requesting, you know, we'd love to get softball started. From that opportunity of starting softball, our, we were fortunate in this spring to win the Women's Inner Sport Network KC Game Changer. I'm going to have my associate A.D., Ms. Meredith Doyle, because she was the recipient of that. Meredith?
Hi, everyone. Thank you. My name's Meredith Doyle, Associate Athletic Director for KCPS. And I'm just going to give you a quick background on WinforKC, which is the Women's Inner Sport Network, established 26 years ago in Kansas City. Its goal is to empower young ladies and women through sport and activity. So Coach Fowler, who's the head softball coach at Lincoln, and myself were fortunate enough to be recipients of the Game Changer Award for WinforKC that's sponsored by Kiss It Construction. And this is an award that was given to us along with KCPS and the District Athletic Office that is a kind of a behind-the-scenes promoter, supporter, champion of girls in sport and activity. So we brought that back to KCPS. It had been several decades since we were able to do so. To my knowledge, this is the first time KCPS has been awarded an award from WinforKC. And so I just want to say thank you very much for your support, Dr. Bedell's support, as we continue expansion for softball within the district. As well as kind of a side note with WinforKC and working with Nicole Collier-White, we have held two, well, we held one satellite camp last year. They do camps in the summer to introduce new sport to young girls. And we held one at Central High School last year and hoping, we're in talks right now, but hoping to hold, hold one at Lincoln Middle after doing several site tours and working with them. And this is also, they sponsor scholarships for our young ladies within KCPS, within the, within their camp. So that's a quick background to the WinforKC. It's great for our district. And I think Joe has a video he wants to show that was shown at this, at the luncheon in which over about 2,500 people were big companies, sponsorships, individuals were a part of this. So I think it's a great thing for our district.
My name is Meredith Doyle.
My name is Elizabeth Fowler.
We are athletes. Lincoln softball hasn't had softball in decades. It was the early 80s was the last time they had a softball program.
One of my players who made it very known to several, several people in our building that we should have softball. Ever since I was in sixth grade, they can tell you that I've been asking for a team. I went around the whole school, told teachers to put out the word, get the names back to me. I would get the names to administration.
She had 28 to 30 girls that were interested in playing, and we said, we have to make this happen. It wasn't within our budget for this year. We didn't have a schedule. We didn't have equipment because we don't have any softball fields in our district. We had three weeks to plan this and get this all together. The partnership with Urban Youth Academy, it has been extremely helpful.
As we created this vision for the Urban Youth Academy, we wanted to figure out how we could grow softball, grow baseball in this community, in Kansas City. And one of our greatest achievements thus far is being able to provide facilities and a structure.
We had a really generous contribution from pro athletes. They gave us basically a team set of gloves. We had a dozen team bats.
That melted our hearts. It showed us people are really out there that support us and support our dream of actually having a softball team.
The first practice, we definitely started with the basics.
So they told me I was going to play shortstop, and I thought that they were putting me there because I was short. Like, this is not what I wanted, but sure, okay. What does this do? I wanted to play center outfield.
But it's center field.
Lincoln on three. One, two, three, Lincoln!
On our first game, we wore our Harrisonville shirts. And we wore them with like, kind of like a pride and like, oh, we're on the Lincoln softball team. This is our first year.
The first game, everyone was nervous. They didn't know what was going to happen. They didn't, they've never played softball, so it was a new experience for all of them. But I think overall, at the end of the day, they realized that this is something they would love to do.
Having everybody cheering us on, like, it could be a blunt hit. And everybody was still excited. The girls in the dugout jumping up and down. After every game, we all came back with smiles, like, no matter what.
Senior night, I cried before the game started and when it ended, and then when I got home, because I'll never get to do this again.
That last time together, I, I looked at a team. I looked at a family.
Be able to pour into our young people through baseball and softball, help grow them as leaders, is really what it's all about.
Every game, we saw something to take as a win. If somebody caught a ball and it was actually an out, or they ran the base correctly this time.
To have a special bond that nobody will ever be able to take away from them, knowing that they were the first in a long time to revive it, not only at that school, but to revive softball in this urban core. Their, their legacy is going to be cemented for many years.
My hope is that it is a catalyst for growing across the district and being able to pull in, you know, other schools in the district.
That's awesome.
With that being said, the Bears are in their cave, sharpening up their bats to take the field next year. So East is already committed that they will have a softball team for the 2021 school year. So Joe, if you could get back to us our slide presentation, be wonderful. Next up, we have what's going, we're currently offering our elementary sports programming. And basically how we did a lot of our elementary sports programming this year, we, first year was our, our trial and error and see what went on. This year, we started adding actual programs along with doing some clubs, because our goal is to find out what's the kids' interest and use them in clubs. And then from a club organization, we'll start adding to sport to it if we find out. Okay, this gives you a synopsis of where we were for our, for our high school numbers for the winter. As, you know, with COVID-19, we were not able to have our spring sports this year. As you can see from the high school numbers, our high school numbers are still, were steady on the increase to, it's blocking my vision right now, but I think it was an increase of about 70 students from 371 to, I think, 484 is where we finished in those overall numbers for winter sports. The next is just a presentation of, in a graphic form of this information I just reported to you. Next up is our middle school sports. We were down a total of 14 students from the previous 2017 and 2018. As you all are all aware of that, middle school has a few less opportunities in the fall. We have wrestling, but not all the schools are wrestling in middle school. So we really intend to increase those numbers as we go through things. But as you can tell, we're still higher than our 2016 number and still in a very nice situation. And this is just a, another graphic representation of what I just talked about. Now, this is where I'm getting, I'm getting excited about. I'm, I'm really liking what we're going to say. From, from now on, it, it's fun, it's exciting, and as my dad say, this is the humdinger piece. We started off this year, we did some camps. We also did basketball camps. We did elementary cheer, and this is a representation of our elementary cheer. We did it on a Saturday morning. We brought our high school cheerleaders and middle school cheerleaders in to cheer with our young ladies in elementary school over at FLA. Next on the agenda is, we, we're entering the elementary, the KC Metro Elementary School Conference. We're already a member of the KC Metro Middle School Conference. In our first year with our fifth and sixth graders, we took, Melcher took first place in the regular season, and Bannenaker took second place overall in their conference tournament. Next year, we will make sure that we'll have the third, third and fourth grade will be in October, then middle school, then fifth, sixth graders. What we need to emphasize though for everyone is that we are, didn't have young ladies in our organizations that participate in elementary school. Our elementary is co, co, both male and female. So our goal is we've really got to work on getting the young ladies out for our participation in those particular sports. Next year, in the KC Metro Conference, what we will be adding, we'll be adding cross-country, cheer, basketball, track, flag football, and we'll, we'll be partnering with Global FC to do our soccer camps along with doing volleyball camps. Now, our first, now we're into our middle school selection here. Last year, if you folks are familiar, that Paseo Middle last year won the cheerleading competition and was looking to repeat. However, they were upset by Northeast Middle School came in with the cheerleading championship for the middle school. Next, please. And, you know, Jeff just keeps getting better. Our Lincoln Middle girls who won took first place, and a lot of these girls were eighth graders, will be moving up to the high school level next year, but we took first in girls' basketball in middle school. Next, please. And in the regular middle school conference season, Central finished second, and they also finished second in the conference. As you, as you all are aware of that, a lot of our middle school athletes at Central Middle and Northeast Middle, once they go into ninth grade, they will split off and go to two different directions. But we've got good foundation from a lot of our young organizations that are going to improve our, our high school. I'd like to say before our next slide, when Dr. Bedell first came to our district, he's going into his fifth year, and his son was, was an eighth grader. We were basically, had basically started our second year of middle school sports. Out of that class of middle schoolers that started in that, we've got, we've had three, three organizations that have went to state. By starting a middle school program, we've developed our young people to compete at the next level. Prior to this, we were not competing and we were getting blown out. And that is why our goal is now... And that is why our goal is now, we're going to take it even to a lower level and give basic training and basic skill sets for our elementary kids. So, and what we've also done to increase our numbers, because we couldn't figure out why we only had a fifth and sixth grade, we sent out a survey to all the elementary school principals to find out what we need to do to improve on elementary. We should get all those, that data back here. We're closing the survey today, so we should be able to compile that survey and get some information. Like, elementary cheer next year, we're hoping to have those people cheer at the middle school halftime games to get those young people involved as well. Our goal is to have posters and flyers out in the elementary school by June, late June, so our young people coming back into school, you know, at that age, sometimes you're not reading as well, but posters talking about sport with pictures and things like that so they can get involved. Now, this is another, we're so excited. We have three wrestlers qualify for state this year, and the gentleman from East is the first East wrestler that ever qualified for state that we're aware of. So this was a remarkable thing, and our three wrestlers are all underclassmen, and they will be back. Before we switch this, before we switch, nope, okay. Now, something I got, I don't have a slide for this because what I wanted to show you is the positive things that we've done with people. But I have one other thing I want to talk to you about before our next slide. At the end of girls' swim season, we had over 60 young ladies that were participating in swim across the district. That has never happened in the history of KCPS. And we were short of having a state qualifier in a relay race to go to state. And these, all four of those young ladies will be back next year. So hopefully next year, when we give this presentation, myself, Meredith, and Tom, we will have a state qualifier in swimming as well. Next slide, please. What's really exceptional this year, too, is we had three district champion teams. Our first district champion team was our Class III district champion, 16, from Central High School. Central High School went up to the, they fell one game short of going to state. It was a remarkable season for those young people, we're so proud of them, and we're losing a couple outstanding athletes, but I think the pipeline is strong at Central. Next, please. And as you all are aware, Lincoln, we had our boys' team, and we also had our girls' team, both win the district championship, which is a remarkable task for two schools that both have district. Also, our girls were qualified for state, but with COVID-19, they were not able to go further. Next, please. Jordan Fortune, he came, myself and Ms. Doyle, two years ago when Jordan came to the district, he came from a charter school, and he felt that the education, educational structure and the things that were at Central were a lot better than the charter school in which he was going. So to get him eligible as a junior, myself and Mrs. Doyle went to the MSHA office and before the committee and fought for him to become eligible. Jordan became an all-state contender this year as a senior, and Dr. Davis's daughter is also all-state, and also Amari. So it's three all-state individuals right there out of our wrestling, our basketball program.
Let me say something, too, on this slide, Dr. Sanders. We know Cora's going to play next year, and Amari is going to U to play Division One Basketball next year.
Right. So, now, some other things I'd like to talk about, you can go to the next slide, and it's the question, but I want to, some things I want to tell you, some more ooh-ahs. First off, Coach Kearney and Coach Atkins won the Greater Kansas City Officials Boys and Girls Award from 2018 and 2019. We have never won that award before, and it was presented this year, which was off the chain. Also, Coach Lowe was named the NFL KC Coach of the Year, and he got a trip to the Pro Bowl. Coach Atkins was also named Coach of the Year for Class 4A Girls Basketball. That is how far we're coming and how far we're going. One other thing I want to tell all you board members, I was so impressed, Meredith and Tom, we were so impressed to see you guys, guys and girls at games. But we're going to do something even better for you next year. Right now, we are scheduling, so baseball will always be on Mondays and Tuesdays, boys' basketball will be Thursdays and Tuesdays and Fridays, girls' basketball will be Mondays and Thursdays, soccer, boys and girls, will be Tuesdays and Thursdays, and volleyball will be Tuesdays and Thursdays. We're structuring it like all the other schools around us, so you'll know what dates your young people are playing on the high school level. Do y'all have any questions? Got to tell you what, we're excited. I'm so sorry we didn't get to do the spring. Hopefully, right now, we have a meeting tomorrow with MSHA that's going to give us some further information, because there is a petition going around the state right now with about 25,000 to 35,000 signatures to extend spring sports into the summer months. So hopefully, we'll get some further information, and we'll pass along to Dr. Bedell and the board. Questions for myself, Tom, or Meredith? Tom's on the phone as well.
Thank you, Dr. Sanders. As always, your enthusiasm is infectious, and I did really enjoy getting to some of those sporting events this year. And the other thing that I think is noteworthy is not only do we have some, like, this explosion of amazing athletes and participation, but crowd turnout is, I think, growing, and that is thrilling, too. So I've seen lots of people from the community, people who live near those surrounding schools, alumni coming back. And so the work you're doing is instilling amazing pride in our KCPS neighbors and in our alums, so I want to thank you for that. I don't have any immediate questions, but I want to open it up to my colleagues for questions.
One other thing, I also want to let you know, the first time since I've been here, we will have the schedules ready for you guys by the end of June on the high school, middle school, and elementary school level. So I'm putting Tom on the line. He's promised, he promised me June 1st, but I'm giving him 20 more days.
All right, thank you.
That's going to be special for us.
Thank you. Board, colleagues?
Patty, one thing. Dr. Sanders and at all, I have the most tremendous respect for all that you all do and your willingness to engage students in the next sports that you're creating within our system. I think that just displays how enthusiastic our students are to get involved, as well as our parents and community at large to support us in one way or another. And I think it's incredible, the value that you all bring. Now, that said, Dr. Bedell, this is a challenge, I guess, from your end. I see this, the athletic department, as an equal partner in the fine arts side. And I think the last time that we had a presentation from the athletics department, I asked for a similar presentation on our fine arts, because I think this is a great opportunity to provide our kids with a balanced extracurricular platform here. So I just, again, want to reiterate the need for that follow-up on that end, too.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments from board members?
So not really a question, just sort of an echo of your comments, Ms. Manser. Dr. Sanders' enthusiasm is infectious, for sure. I wish we were there in person because he'd be jumping around and like, almost throwing things at us during the presentation, which I'm a fan of, by the way. But I do, so I went to a couple of the games, and should have gotten to more of them, frankly, because every one that I went to, I loved, right? To Ms. Manser's point, that the crowd participation and the excitement around it is incredible to watch. I'm committed to attending a lot more games in the upcoming year, and I'm going to drag our treasurer, Mr. Barker, along with us, because apparently he can't even throw a softball, so we're going to teach him how by letting him observe our kids. So thanks for all the work that you guys are doing in the athletics world.
And also, I was going to tell you that we've put the order in, so you guys will have some shirts next year. I think they're, Meredith, you can quote me, I think they're white and blue, but I'll have the logo, so when you go, people will know who you guys are.
Yeah, black and blue polos, along with some jackets, like Nike jackets.
There we go. Those Jordan logos on some of those pictures, that's all I'm going to say.
Well, we'll have to try to live up to those. Thank you, Ms. Doyle. Any other questions or comments from board members on the athletics presentation tonight? All right. Thank you again. It's exciting. I can see that you all are really outcomes-oriented. It is phenomenal what you've been able to produce, and I'm very appreciative. So thank you again for this presentation, Ms. Doyle and Dr. Sanders. So, Dr. Bedell, the final item for this evening is you are going to just provide a quick notice of upcoming business items for the April 22nd business meeting.
Yes, Madam Chair, there's two items at this point. Phillips paving, for summer paving and asphalt projects in the amount of $471,791, and MTS contracting for summer building exterior projects in the amount of $348,400.
All right. Are there any other additional items that you need to share, Dr. Bedell, before we conclude?
No, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you, everyone. This brings us to the conclusion of our agenda for this evening. We will be back again using this same format, which we will get better at over time. And our next business meeting will be the budget hearing, starting at 6:00 PM on April 22nd. And there will be additional information put forth for the public so that they have information about what will be entailed in that meeting for April 22nd. So with this, this brings us to our adjournment for the evening. Thank you, everyone, for joining us, and good night.
Thank you.
Bye, guys.
Good night, everybody.